April nineteenth. Oh, want me to go back?
No, I'm good. Go ahead.
I gotta go. Got it. Um, call or order the special meeting of the Weatherfield Town Council for today, April nineteenth. Sue, if you would, do us the honor of roll call, please.
Counselor Biggs. Counselor Forrest. Counselor Hill. Counselor Lesser.
Here.
Counselor O'Connor. Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Counselor Pentalo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mazzarella.
Yeah.
Mayor Ralph.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Um, just so everybody knows ahead of time, um, I figured other than maybe Ken who hasn't done it in a few years, everybody has seen these line items over and over and over and over. So I've asked the department heads to highlight the line items that have a difference, um, either higher or lower. And then if you wanna go back and have other questions, um, I think that would work, but I don't know. To me, going through line items and there are no changes. I mean, certainly we'll take questions, but um, I think you're really, if you're looking for anything, it isn't hundred dollars. It's other larger amounts. So with that mayor, unless somebody has a question, Derek is all set to go and he'll hit his budget and then he will talk as everyone will about any J A Qs or um, new hires they're looking for, the C N E F and the capital. So.
Got it. Perfect.
Derek, you ready? You can be our.
Question, if I could, before we start. The, um, items that don't have any history for prior years, uh, I assume those are all new items or they just been reclassified?
Are you looking at my budget in particular?
Yes.
Um, yeah, there's, I think there's one item that is new, um, that I can explain. As we go.
Like, if you look at the first page, uh, travel training dues, there's no actuals for eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, they only give us the totals on that typically, right, Mike?
Michael, can you explain that?
Yeah, for the, for the actual amounts, it's, we don't break it out. That's, you know, we don't do that.
Okay.
Uh, we carry the, the budgeted amount from this year. We've got the breakdown for you. And we can get you, we can get you, you know, vendor detail, payment detail on any, any line you'd like.
No, I just look like if you look at the first line salaries and wages, you have actuals for eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
Yep.
But on these smaller items, you just don't break it down. Is that what you're saying?
No. Actuals? No, for all the non-personnel lines, the group, the, all the shaded bars, we've
Okay.
We've got the the actual amounts. All the actuals are in there. You should, you, you know, you go down to the bottom to the total line. That's the total for, those are the real amounts that were heard for those, for each of those years.
Got it. Thank you.
And Tom, if you want the last three, I got them. At least I have it going back. Well, it would go back.
No, no. Trying to understand how it played out. That's all. I'm good.
I can go back in my notes all the way to actual twenty sixteen seventeen forward. I have for individual breakdowns. If you have any specific questions. For historical purposes. Okay, Derek.
You get started? Alright, so, um, as Bonnie said, I'll just try and keep it brief. The things that have changed on salaries, the only change was in our I W, that's our inland wetlands conservation commission clerk. Um, there was an increase and, uh, we have a new one on board and we had increased the salary a little bit. So the increases result of that. Um, just to mention overtime pay, um, just so everyone understands, that's typically for my staff during our paving programs. Often they have to be here early or late, or sometimes on holidays or weekends, um, depending on what the contractor's doing. So usually that's what it's for, unless we have some deadline that we're trying to meet as far as an application or something of that nature. And then moving down the list to travel, training and dues, there's been, uh, some adjustments to some of the line items there. Um, I looked, I discussed it with Bonnie. I'm comfortable with those changes. Uh, some of it's just a little less training, but I think, you know, we certainly make that work. So that's a, a cut of about eleven hundred dollars out of that category. Moving down to office machinery and services, um, we've reduced some of those when talking with Bonnie based on prior years. So that's about a thirteen hundred dollar reduction. Repair and maintenance, proposed equipment, that's the item that I usually use for a lot of the maintenance programs that we do. So there, there have been some changes. So in pavement markings, um, just based on the cost increases we experienced last year. Um, I'm looking for an increase of fifty to fifty-five thousand, cause we spent, uh, just about just over fifty last year. And I expect it'll be a little higher this year. There is a new item, uh, labeled as guardrails that came up this past year. Uh, physical services doesn't really budget for guide, guide rail installations or replacements. So um, we're gonna put it in my budget for when that comes up. Um, often it requires some level of engineering design. So we'll have that in the budget and available, um, as needed. Uh, the other one that is a significant change is the CCTV. That's for drainage inspections. Um, I had gotten that added to the budget a few years ago. It's been helpful when we have drainage problems and flooding issues to be able to get a contractor in to clean out the pipes and, and inspect them for us. So we can get an idea of what needs to be done. Um, and talking with the town manager, uh, you know, I, I was asking for fifteen thousand. I, I would like to at least get five thousand. Um, only because to get them into town, I mean, that, that adds up pretty quickly. It's usually a four or five thousand dollar fee for them to do a, you know, a moderate or even minimal amount of work. Um, so if I could make that five thousand, I would, that would be helpful. Um, I don't necessarily need the fifteen thousand. It really depends. It's year to year. It depends on what kind of issues we have. A lot of the problems we've had, I, we've already, I've done this work and I identified. So I, I would be comfortable with that. Um, wetlands flagging, um, similarly, it's usually, you know, eight hundred dollars probably gets me a couple of projects. That varies year to year, um, as far as what I know is coming up, that, that should be sufficient. So overall, because of some of the adjustments, and increase of, uh, maybe around six thousand, uh, maybe more if I can get five thousand on the CCTV. Then the next few items, there were some.
Eric, did you say wetlands flagging?
Wetlands flagging, yes.
Is that part of like during any construction progress process? We have to like flag wetlands in order to make some type of determination in the wetlands?
They're usually related to a construction project that we're in design and we need to do permitting. So if we're working in or close to the wetlands, we'll usually have a soil scientist go out there, flag it. And then our surveyor will pick up that, that information for the plans for the permitting process.
Is that something that can be borne, uh, um, whether it's this item or other similar items born on the applicant in order to sort of do this? So the applicant sort of bears that weight and it can come off of our budget?
That is their responsibility for their projects. This is for our projects. When, when engineering has to go through, uh, do inland wetlands permits, we have to, just like everybody else.
Okay.
Um, so it would be for our specific projects.
I understand. Thank you.
Um, the next few items, there were some small adjustments, um, up and down a little bit. Um, the next big item is IT equipment and software. Um, we've, we've had some staff changes in the last year. So, uh, we were able to consolidate some of our subscriptions. So there's some reductions. The one increase is AutoCAD. I do, now that I have different staff with different capabilities, I do wanna upgrade our software to the next level of design work, which will make things easier and more efficient for us. So there's a slight increase in the cost of that. Um, a couple of the other items went down. Just to note on the last two, typically we had a thousand dollars for GPS network subscriptions, which is our, our surveyor uses for, um, some of his work. We were able to find a, a free network that it works just as well for us. So we just eliminated the thousand dollars from that. And then the ArcView software, um, I think that really gets paid out of finances budget anyway. So we just took that out as well. So with all those changes, um, the non-personnel changes was an increase of point eight four percent. Overall, it was four point six percent with personnel.
Wanna take questions now, Mayor, or you want them to go ahead with the J A Qs?
Yeah. Big questions for right now on this. Similar to what Matt had asked about for the flagging, the closed circuit TV, you know, this is, God knows how many years I've been probably, you've been talking about these and, you know, we've been putting money towards it. Is this anything that, you know, coming off of this last summer where we've had all the drainage issues? Does M D C do this for some of the projects that they do? Can we piggyback off of M D C?
They typically will TV their own systems. Usually that doesn't involve us unless um, the, the two times we, we get involved, we have them do that. Or we ask them to do that when we're gonna be paving roads to get ahead of it. If they think they may have problems, which they usually do. Uh, we've had one neighborhood where we've had some settlement issues, both on the drainage and the sanitary sewer systems. They've TV that. Um, but this is specifically for drainage and we've had that conversation. They don't, they don't do drainage. I mean, we've had one offs where they were out there and we needed something for a short distance, they'll do it. But generally speaking, um, they, they don't do drainage with their system. So this is for us to have our consultant, who we have on call, come in and do that work. It's, you know, being that it's in my operating budget, I usually, there's been years I spent it all. And if I don't, it gets, you know, swept at the end of the year and then I I need a new allocation for the following fiscal year.
Okay. How, how much would the equipment cost, Derek, if we were to buy our own camera?
I, I haven't really priced that out. I know, um, you know, I've heard in the past that the truck, I mean, it requires a whole truck, uh, you know, the robotic equipment, the jetting equipment. I mean, we're probably looking at, you know, six figure type of purchases.
So you're not, you're not just talking about sending a camera down there?
Yeah, I mean, this is more, they do full, I mean, sometimes they're going four, five, six hundred feet into a line that we can't see. With a camera, it's recorded. We get a report that tells us exactly where they've seen issues. So we can identify. It's been useful on a lot of projects where we can figure out where we need to dig, to get physical services out there to make the repair instead of you know, guessing at it.
And then the other question I had, like, what I was trying to get to about the actuals, do you, do you know how much we've spent for that particular line item in, in say like the last couple of years? It's, it's not broken down, just the total of all those.
I, I have that information. I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, I, I can know last year or so far this fiscal year, we spent about five or six thousand dollars. Um, I know there have been years where I spent all fifteen. Um, so it really depends, um, on what happens throughout the year. But if you need that information, I can get it for you.
No, just if, if you got the five or six that you're asking for, that might cover at least half of the times or half of the year.
Yeah, I, I think so. And, and I have a little bit in a P O right now. So if I can roll that P O over and P O over into the new fiscal year, then between those two, I think it'll be fine.
Thanks.
Derek, I have a general question. First off, thanks. Thanks for all you do. I wanted to ask you kind of how stretched you and your staff are. We, we hear stories that you guys are pretty stretched and alongside that, maybe you don't have this information. How would your department compare in terms of staffing, maybe to nearby towns, um, in terms of engineering department?
Well, um, yes, and that's part of my discussion later. I have some information I was gonna present just to give everyone an update on where we are funding wise and the projects that we have coming down the pike. Um, I did recently hire another engineer, which, um, is very helpful for me, um, so I could focus a little more on the administrative side of things. Um, but we are, you know, we are pretty much busy, uh, all full time with the regular maintenance, responding to the public, doing our annual programs. So the discussion I wanted to have, you know, at the end of this presentation was about, you know, what other projects that we have and we have a good amount of funding. You know, how, how we're gonna get those done because, um, that added, that added work and tasks, even though we're capable of doing a lot of that, takes time and that's been a struggle. Um, I would say in the, in the near term, in the recent history, I've been short staffed. We had a big turnover in staff. I have all new staff pretty much. Um, and I had someone come in and leave right away. So last year and a half, it's been me as the engineer and that's been really tough. It's honestly, it's put me in a bit of a hole. So I, I've gotta try and dig out of that now. Um, but that's something we can discuss further. As far as comparison to other towns, it varies. You know, I, I came from Manchester. We had twenty-three people in engineering. It operated like a consulting firm. You know, we had like six P Es on staff, you know, two licensed land surveyors. It was a large staff, but that's not common. Um, I think for the amount of work we do here in town and the fact that we've been very aggressive going after funding to get projects done, I, I, I think we're you know, we're, we're staffed, you know, pretty average for most, most municipalities. Some have more, some have less. It really comes down to, you know, how much you're on top of things. I know there's other towns, similar size, that may have less staff, but you know, we issue four hundred, four hundred fifty permits a year for work in the right of way. We try to get to all of those and close them out. There's a lot of those things that have gone by the wayside when we just don't have enough staff to be on top of it. So I think to keep up the level of service that we're trying to provide, um, you know, we certainly, I, I feel we're, we're operating as, as, as lean as we can.
And I know that, um, Derek's gonna go through this later, but I have to tell you, I was pretty shocked when I saw who put together the C I P and Tom, you know how much work goes into every one of those meetings that we put together and you're looking at who's doing it all. And that's not Derek's, I mean, it's pretty, it's something a clerical person could do, but Derek's the one who's doing it. And think of all the time that he's not spending now on being an engineer that i- if we hired someone even part-time to help with things like that, or share it with another staff or department, oh my God, what a difference for him. So, um, I personally think they are very short-staffed. And he, like he said, both of us wanted to talk about another issue that's gonna come up with all this grant money. So.
So, um, before we go into that other position we're talking about, um, you had requested, uh, engineering tech two from part-time to full-time and also a part-time clerk two.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, that's page five, what Tom's talking about.
No, so those got taken out or?
Well, I didn't put in any new positions. I didn't put in any J A Qs, but I prioritized them. So now if you wanna do something, you'll see what priority they are townwide.
Is, is, are those two positions part of your discussion that we're gonna have here shortly?
Yeah, I'll explain that.
Okay.
Alright, um, if there's no other questions, I can move on to page fifty-one briefly.
Derek, just really quickly. It's, and I'm just trying to understand a little here, just under the software section, whether it's Carlson, AutoCAD, Blue Beam, Hydraulics. Like, you know, if I have YouTube TV, it's fifty-nine, fifty-nine dollars a month times twelve. Like, I know what it is. But here they're like round numbers and the town manager reduced them by eight hundred and two hundred, a hundred fifty. Like, if you're gonna get software Carlson, do you not know how much it's gonna be in the next year that there's a adjustment that can be made or is it just like a price? And I may be not viewing this appropriately. So if you could just give me some, some context, that'll be helpful.
So prior to not this year, we had three staff members that used that software. The cost was approximately three hundred dollars per um, license for it. So in fact, now I have one chief of surveys who uses, he's the only one that uses this, we only need one, which last I, last year was two hundred ninety-five dollars. It may be a little over three hundred this coming year. So we budgeted for um, AutoCAD, similarly, I think it's around thirty-one hundred and change. That's the quote I have from them to upgrade to our civil three D software. Um, Blue Beam, it comes in around seven hundred and something. You know, there's a little bit of a factor for some additional cost or if I wanted to add um, a new seat to it that was built in before. I mean, now I'm pretty much, you know, I'll live, we'll live with what we have, which is we have six seats. So that eight hundred's gonna just cover that. So, yeah, I don't get, you know, I usually don't break it down to the dollar. You know, we round up a little bit. There is always some changes that could occur. So it gives us a little bit of fluff, but a lot of that's been cut out. You know, this time around with, in a lot of these categories.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had one question about CROG. Do we do anything with engineering with CROG? Um, any kind of partnership besides, you know, bids for paving or anything like that? Do they help out with software? Would they help out with supplying, uh, you know, a regional vendor for the closed circuit TV or can we share that with any other municipality?
There, they do offer, they do offer bids, you know, and, and like we've talked about in the past, we use them for pavement markings. We use them for crack sealing. Um, I did try to get CROG to put out a reclamation bid, um, as we've talked about, the state has eliminated that from their contract. We use it. We've always used it, uh, very heavily. A lot of towns did. Um, I did reach out to CROG this past winter to see if they would put that out for us in other towns, but they didn't seem that interested in doing it. So we ended up putting it out ourselves. Um, we do, you know, I'm involved in the transportation committee. They do have on-call consultants for different things that we may have used from time to time. Um, and we coordinate them a lot and a lot sip application and grant. But as far as strictly engineering work, not too much, other than they have, you know, some pre-qualified consultants that we could utilize off of their, uh, bidding process.
Got it.
I was on the municipal services committee meeting today and there's a survey that just came out yesterday asking for what kind of services, um, do we wanna regionalize? So I'll get that to all the department heads. And have, cause they are open to new and all kinds of ideas. So I'm gonna get it out to department heads tomorrow that they could fill out and, uh, cause all the towns are hurting to get people to help out right now.
Okay, thanks. That'd be good.
Okay, if we, we wanna move on to page fifty-one, I was just going to mention, um, we had, as I mentioned, we had some staff changes. So my senior project manager didn't start until October of this fiscal year. So we had a few months of, um, unexpended salary. Um, we do have, uh, currently we have three vehicles, but we have five staff members that are out in the field quite a bit. Um, so I had asked Bonnie if I would be able to utilize some of the unspent salary just to purchase a, um, a small S U V. Um, I have one of my, uh, construction inspectors using a very small Ford Focus that's about six inches off the ground. It's not good when he needs to be off-road or on a construction site. So um, we still could utilize that vehicle for more sidewalk inspections, but, um, you know, we, we, she was okay with us putting about twenty-five to thirty thousand towards a purchase of a, a new vehicle for engineering. And included all the safety lights and everything else that would be installed.
That would come from salary savings?
Correct.
Yep. Do any of the, does the sidewalk inspector use his own vehicle? And do we pay fuel or anything like that?
He, he has chosen to usually use his own vehicle. We don't, uh, compensate for that. So we, we, we have vehicles, we, you know, we can make work, but, uh, he, he has chosen to usually use his own vehicle. Um, sometimes he has to respond to, uh, fire calls and things of that nature from where he is. And I think that's his preference.
Gotcha. Who would use the small SUV?
Uh, well, we'd have two escapes. So one would be utilized between me and my senior project manager, who also is the construction manager. So he's out in the field quite a bit. Um, one of them would be used by, by my construction inspector who's in the field the most. Um, you know, depending on what happens with the sidewalk inspector, I would keep the other vehicle for, uh, for them. Um, or, uh, we would utilize it for, um, other staff that may need to go out or share it into department if needed.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have a question about the vehicles. Does, um, so, because, you know, my instinct would be just to let people use their own vehicles and we'll reimburse them for mileage, but, um, is it that they need to have the lights on the vehicles or is that only certain positions, uh, you know, certain work that requires that sort of, um, you know, special features?
Yeah, I mean, for my staff, uh, they should have safety lights. They're out in the right of way on the side of the road all the time. Um, so that, that's the reason they would utilize it. My, my part-time sidewalk inspectors with the fire department, um, he has some of that capability with his own vehicle. Um, but yeah, for our type of work, I, I like to have my guys have lights installed.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess well, I don't wanna labor the point. I know we're short on time. If any of the police SUVs come offline, can we utilize those? I know the SUVs are new. And when, you know, I don't wanna send you out in one of the old Crown Vex, but, you know, if we can pull, I, I haven't gone to the police budget or looked at the, uh, line items for new police vehicles, but if there's any police vehicles coming offline, could we utilize those?
We always check. In fact, um, Steve Ladarula was wondering of that same thing and Sally said there's two that might be available. Um, but you know, I mean, they're not in the best shape, but they're usables without having to buy um, another, uh, new vehicle, say for building. But I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, I don't think that's what you're looking for. I mean, I can't see a police for, uh, a police vehicle out on a construction site.
Me, we had talked with Sally, uh, last couple of years, I've been asking about old SUVs coming off of PD line. I know in that respect, she said there was nothing that, uh, they felt was salvageable. It would be more costly to, to keep them running. Um, that was our first preference, but that hasn't worked out the last couple of years. So that's why we moved in the direction of just getting something else with the available budget.
Derek, if you, uh, had to make a priority between the personnel that we're talking about here, whether it's part-time, you know, clerk or technician and the car. How would you prioritize those two?
Well, I mean, sidewalks are a, a big issue. I'm sure you've all heard. I get a lot of phone calls. I was gonna talk a little bit more about that, but, um, you know, certainly staffing um, would be my primary concern, you know, vehicles like maybe, maybe we could work out something where, you know, if I'm out, if I'm or if staff is out where they're not necessarily on the road or not on the road live, if they could take their own vehicles. I mean, we, we may have some opportunities. I don't know, we, I, I would look for the staff and figure out the vehicles after.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, if you wanna move on to, uh, C N E F request, that's page eighty. I had two requests in that. Um, one is for a large format, uh, plotter. Um, engineering, we have, we have two plotters here. One's black and white and also a scanner that we use quite often. Um, the other one is a color plotter that's specific for color plots. Um, we use them quite a bit for our design work meetings and presentations. Um, the unit we have is, is ten years old, which for that type of equipment is, um, getting pretty dated. It frequently breaks. Um, it's often down for maintenance, sometimes up to a week to get the parts they need to fix it. Um, so the request was for forty-five hundred dollars to purchase a, a new color plotter, um, to replace it. It would be the same type of plotter we have. We don't need a scanning component, com- component, which saves some money because we had it with our other one. Um, but we do utilize the color plots quite a bit. The other request I had was for, um, an F one fifty. Um, this is related to our survey vehicle. It's a two thousand four Chevy Excursion. Um, it's used by our, uh, chief of surveys, you know, he's out in the field quite a bit with equipment, tools, supplies, you know, off-road areas, construction sites. Um, we've been talking about physical services last couple of years about it and they're, they're aware of the need. It was coming up for replacement. Um, you know, I, I'm just putting in the request now to at least get it on your radar that, um, that is a vehicle that's, you know, pushing, uh, eighteen, twenty years old now and it's, it's rusting out. It's still running. Um, they have made some repairs to brakes in the front end and, and recent years. Um, so we're keeping it going, but just something I, uh, I put in for this year. It was, uh, I mentioned it last year, but I didn't put it, actually put it in. So I put in the request this year. That, that cost includes the, the truck off the state contract as well as, um, and, and aftermarket add-on for surveyors. We need, um, we need to go storage compartments that would be mounted onto the back of the truck for their, you know, they have a lot of sensitive equipment, tools and supplies, um, to build a house and unlock them up.
Page and line item, Derek? We're in fifty?
Eighty-eight, the number two line item.
I'm sorry, there's a second and third line items in that list.
Which page?
Yeah, eighty-one.
Alright, so, thank you.
Would the, uh, Derek, would the, uh, F one fifty have a cap on it to protect all your equipment or?
Yeah, it would have actually a mounted, uh, storage unit that would have, it would go both down sides of the bed that is accessible from the outside for them to access equipment that they would need.
And the bed would be covered?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm thinking, yeah, I think it's all covered and it has on the side. So the underneath, yeah, everything would be secure.
And the other question I had, maybe, um, jumping ahead, you have on the, uh, ARPA requests, you had the, uh, map document scanning for twenty-five thousand? That's
Yep. We do have a scanner, uh, we do use it, but we have, um, somewhere in the vicinity of thirty-five hundred milars and we have a lot of um, planning, uh, as well as engineering files that we, permits that need to be scanned. So we had gotten some pricing. It was about three, four years ago now, um, to have a company come in and do that and link it up to our new municipality software. We've kind of, we put that project on hold for a while. Um, we, I think we had gotten twenty-five thousand a few years ago. Um, there, there is a need for more. We were gonna do a certain amount, so we put another twenty-five thousand dollar request into that. And the idea is to have a company come in and, and do all that, link it up to our new municipality software, which just got, um, set up for engineering uh, two, three months ago, after many years, it took a long time. Uh, two, three months ago, after many years, it took a long time and now I think they're working on planning. So. Um, that will, that software, as we've talked about in the past, will provide us the ability to pull up information very quickly and make it more accessible and public quicker.
So are we buying any equipment on this item or we're just having a service performed for scanning the? Thanks.
And do we have a list of the uh, ARPA? Funding?
Page eighty-one?
Well, actually I took everything for capital and CNEF out of the, the regular budget and. Technically, they all could be funded through ARPA, but I could also make sure that you guys have the list of. Well, I think that's already in your book, um, of the capital committee and what they approved in priority order for capital. That's on eighty-one. And then on CNEF. Um, the non-capital subcommittee had done some rank orders on some of their items. Um, that's on page eighty. But you know, technically, I mean, I'm pretty sure almost everything could be an ARPA pick.
So the CNEF list on page eighty, is that? Listed and priority, like, you know, ranking, uh, ranked by priority, like?
No, the only, the only things that are ranked, Mary, um, would be the non-capital items that went through the subcommittee, um, Tom and Pat and Kevin.
The, so like I, the ones that are like a high priority?
Yeah, that say hi, those through the subcommittee and all that. I could certainly, if you want, I could take a look at the other ones and come up with a priority list too, townwide. I'll be glad to.
Oh, I, I was just curious. I don't know. Uh, you know, we need to do that, but. Cause there's a lot listed as high priority. So I don't think we'll.
I know, I know. That's the problem.
Yeah.
I just point out that that CNEF list. Those items that you see. You know, that don't have a, a ranking, a priority. Just so everyone understands, those were not. Reviewed by the subcommittee. Those were, those were items. Put forth by department heads as part of the regular budget process. But we tried to do this to get everything together. In, on two pages in this, you know, in this case. You know, the items that went through the CIAC. Um, the item that went through the ARPA subcommittee of the council and then the department head requests. Uh, that came through as part of the budget.
So I, that's interesting. So I just noticed, and I'm just gonna throw out an observation that. Of everything reviewed by the ARPA subcommittee, everything is high priority except one thing. That's a medium priority. So I just think that's fascinating. I know there's a lot of, a lot of needs, but I guess that just illustrates it nicely.
Well, there were some items they wouldn't even rank.
Oh, okay.
So is it my understanding, whether it's the CNEF or this other one, you know, the ARPA request, none of this is actually currently in the budget?
Correct. That's correct.
And then if we were to say designate some of the ARPA funds for that, would we budget them in and then have a corresponding like? Revenue line, which is kind of like a pull from the funds that we've received. Is that how that would look?
I will let Michael answer that. He's our financial pro on best how to do that.
They would be. They would, we have a grant fund set up. The way we, we were handling this fund, it's a grant. We're handling it like we handle all grants. Um, which is, there's a separate fund to track everything and within the fund, we have projects. You know, for some of the larger items, you know, to track them, just that, that just helps us with reporting. Um, but this does, you know, this does not. Have to flow through the general fund. I would recommend that it wouldn't flow through the general fund because it would just complicate grant reporting and, and things like that.
And this is of course huge for our. Understanding like, so with this truck that we're just talking about, if we think that this falls with under the ARPA guidelines and is doable. When we look at our budget, we could say, look, we think that we're going to take care of it through ARPA. We're not going to budget for it in the print in the regular budget. Is that a general conceptually accurate?
Yeah, except you have to remember it's not in the budget. So it doesn't affect your bottom line or my, I should say my bottom line since it's my proposed budget right now.
So. Okay, so it's, so in order to spend the money, even if it's, you know, more than a hundred thousand dollar charter limit or whatever the number is, we don't have to put that in the budget. If it's. You know, we don't have to put that in the budget, you're saying. We could spend a half a million dollars, a million dollars.
About the funds, yeah.
Uh-huh. And not, and not, not be in the budget and be approved by council at a non-budget meeting and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, and why is it that it doesn't offend like that charter rip, you know, portion?
It's not the annual budget.
Right. So any expenditure isn't an expenditure that's more than a hundred thousand dollars. It's not in the annual budget. Is, I don't know, it's not a. We can't do it, I think, without a vote or something like that.
Oh, no, you have to vote, but it would be not a part of the budget vote.
We would have to approve the allocation for any spending out of ARPA. But it would not be tied to. This year's budget.
Right.
And we could do that for any amount?
Yes, I already asked the town attorney way back when this first came out. Do we have to follow the guidelines with the ARPA funding? And he said, no.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Derek, do you, I, I think there's still. Did you want to go over the um, the position we didn't have listed?
Uh, yes, and I'm running over my time here. So um. You know, if I could skip over the uh, CIP projects, I mean, I guess they want information on those. Um, I was going to speak a little bit more to the full-time sidewalk inspector.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. All right, um. So, I, as, as was mentioned earlier, um, I had, I put in a request, I, I put in this request multiple times since I got here. Uh, for, for the sidewalk inspector. So that, just so everyone's aware, that, that position used to be full-time. In two thousand fifteen, before I came on board, it was changed to a part-time position. I don't know exactly the reasons why. Um, but just some statistics to give you a sense of where we are as far as sidewalks. We have a hundred and thirteen miles of sidewalks in town. Um, we look back over the last six years. Um, generally our repairs uh, equate to about point one-six miles per year. Um, which is about point one-four percent. It's a very small amount. Um, you know, as you know, there's a, quite a bit of sidewalk in town that's in poor condition and needs repair. Some of that is private property responsibility. Some of that is the towns. Um, so one of the large components of this particular position is uh, not only managing our sidewalk contractor, doing work along town properties or. In front properties that are damaged by town trees or other town infrastructure. Um, is coordinating with the private owners that need to do repairs. Uh, that involves, when they do that, it takes quite a bit of time. Uh, we have to um, first identify that there's an issue. Uh, we send them uh. A notice saying that they have so many days to have it repaired. Um, with that, then we gotta, you know, he's gotta meet with the owners. He's gotta expect the contractors doing the work to make sure it's done. And that's if they're responsive. If they're not responsive, sometimes it's two or three notices. It's knocking on their doors. Um, you know, we tend to be a very reactive um, group with respect to sidewalks. When we get complaints, when we have trips and falls. We go and have it addressed. Um, ideally, we should have a more of a proactive program with a sidewalk inspection program that allows us over. The course of maybe four or five years to inspect the whole town. Um, we haven't been able to implement that just because I, I just don't have time um, for that. So aside from sidewalk work, and this position also helps us out with drainage work. Um. They also help out with managing our permits. You know, we issue four hundred, four hundred fifty excavation permits every year. It's a lot of inspections and I have two guys, one and a half right now that try to manage that, um, which is quite a bit of work. Um, we also, you know, help out in the office, answering calls, helping at the counter, issuing permits, survey work from time to time. Um, so you know, this is a request I've made many times. I, 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 like I said, I don't understand why it was made part-time. It certainly. Could use to be a full-time position. I get a, I get a lot of complaints regarding sidewalks. And this is a, this is a position that can generate its own work. We typically issue somewhere between fifteen to eighteen notices a year. So that's, that's that many properties that we try and work with. And the reason why we've held it to that is we. We try and limit it to the number of properties we can reasonably manage and get the work done. Um, part of the reason is because once we've issued a notice, we've put on the record that the town is aware of a trip and fall hazard. And we, we work hard to try and get that taken care of and follow through. But then, like I said, there's a lot of coordination that goes with that. There's certainly, we could issue, we could go out anytime and issue two or three hundred of these. But for that reason, we try to limit it to the ones that are the worst and the ones that um, we feel we can. You know, reasonably get done in a year. So, um, you know, this, this, like I said, this project could uh, could easily be full-time. I, I. I don't think making this full-time is going to solve all our problems, but certainly step in the right direction to providing more attention to our sidewalks that are desperately in need or repair all throughout town.
Derek, just so I can get my head around some figures, if you go to page five. Are we talking about engineering tech two, part-time to full-time?
That's correct.
And that's seventy-eight thousand?
That's seventy-eight thousand. I believe that includes all the benefits and everything else. Um, the salary itself was around sixty-one thousand for just.
Okay. And if we go back to page fifty. Staff position number five. So would we have two engineering technician twos?
Yes, this, this one is listed as engineer, uh, position six, which is engineering technician part-time. Um, yes, I would have two technicians too. One of them right now is, is an office technician. He runs the counter. He handles all our permitting. Our map filing. So he's more of office-based. This would be a technician two that would be more field and construction inspection-based.
So where in your seven staff people would the part-time uh, sidewalk inspector be?
We'd eliminate that position and convert it to a full-time sidewalk inspector position.
Where are they?
This would be a tech, engineering tech two technically in the union. That would be. Yeah.
Okay, but where is the sidewalk inspector of the one through seven on page fifty? Right now.
Which position, Derek, is it currently listed under?
Engineering technician P slash T.
Part-time?
Twenty-two thousand three thirty-six, yes.
Okay. That's, that would bump up to seventy-eight. And then going back to page five. There is a part-time clerk two position. Where would that go?
That would be a new position out of those seven that are listed on page fifty.
Okay. So you would have eight staff people. You would take number six, make that a full-time at seventy-eight. You would add a new. Seven, which would be the part-time from page five at fifteen-three. And then you would have. A number eight, which would be the IWCC.
That's correct.
One just in clarification, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
The seventy-eight thousand dollars is the marginal increase. It doesn't, that, that wouldn't go from twenty-two thousand to seventy-eight thousand. It's an additional seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's the net. Increase in the cost to take, to change that position. It includes the twenty-three thousand or so for medical. It's not just, it's the full cost. So seventy-eight thousand is, is. The increased cost to make it a full-time position with benefits.
With the twenty-two thousand already. So.
Yes, that's, so it's, so it's about. It's about ninety. It's about a, about a hundred. With, but it wouldn't be a hundred on the salary line. There'd be twenty down on the medical line.
Yep, got it, got it, got it. What would the salary line be?
Um, the salary for step one at that pay grade is sixty-one thousand two seventy-three.
Okay.
That would go in where line six is.
Got it. Sixty-one, two seventy-three and then the additional. Uh. Twenty and change, I got it, can't do my math that quickly, but it would go into. FICA health insurance.
Defined contribution.
All that. Okay. Bottom line, it would be an increase in all those of seventy-eight thousand. Combined.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the total cost of adding that position. We would take out the twenty-two thousand that we're paying now out of that. So. Fifty-six thousand dollar increase and.
No, no. The net increase is seventy-eight thousand.
Yep.
Oh, that's the name.
Seventy-eight thousand on top of the twenty-two. All in salary and benefits. So if you, if you made that change. You'd be adding seventy-eight thousand dollars to the department budget.
Got it.
Derek, you started to, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, you all set?
No, I'm set.
All right. Uh, Derek, you started to speak uh, toward it. Um, with adding this position as far as the sidewalk maintenance repair and, and review and whatnot. Um, you said that they would pretty much create their own work. I was hoping you would go there. Do you, did you uh. Do a analysis of what that dollar amount might be of adding that person full-time? How much money do you actually think they could generate as far as going out and reviewing these sidewalks?
Well. I don't know if they necessarily would generate money for us. They would, we would be able to get more sidewalks repaired and thereby reduce our liability. You know, like I said, we're very reactive in that respect because we, we, we are proactive in going out and doing inspections regularly and identifying problems and fixing them. From time to time, we see stuff, but generally it's because there was a trip and fall and we have a lawsuit now. Or because we got a complaint from somebody, we'll go out there and get it, get it addressed. So by having, when I say that, I just mean we can. Give out as many notices as we can reasonably do, which should be a lot more than we're doing now and be able to follow through on those and get those done. In general, improving the general quality of the sidewalks and then reducing those probabilities for trip and falls.
Thank you, sir.
Derek, it seems like for the same cost, you could get three more part-timers. Or something that is, you know, fair, fairly straightforward. Why not get three more bodies, even at a part-time level? Then just changing someone from half to full. It seems more effective, efficient, but that's just a math game.
Depends on how, who we can find. Um, you know, part-time work with that specialty happens to work in this case because. My employee has another full-time job and he fits this in when he can. Usually it's two or three days a week. Um, which leaves us with our other inspector having to cover what he's already doing plus sidewalks when I don't have somebody there. So. Um, yeah, in theory, we, we could supplement. It, it just had, you know, from a staffing perspective or from a management perspective, that's going to be difficult because now I'm going to have all these different people. We're all working with the same contractors and trying to make sure the communication is, is consistent coming out of the department.
And Bob Keller.
What it was and then, and like I said, understand why it was changed, but it was changed at some point and.
I mean, seventy-eight thousand dollars, now you can understand why it was changed.
Yeah, the problem is, so we're way behind on the sidewalks. We got, I really, since I've been here, there's a lot of trip and falls.
I mean, I can't put a number to the, the cost of the attorneys and the insurance claims that are going through, but you know, we certainly get quite a few a year. That we are involved with.
Anything else with positions, um, Derek? Yep, the positions in the book, other than the other one you and I talked about.
Yeah, just quickly, the, the part-time administrative assistant that. We had a financial analyst that worked for the department that served engineering, planning and the fire marshal's office. Uh, she transferred out of the department in January of nineteen. Um, so we had that position baked it for a long time. And given some of the discussion we've had about the technical work that needs to be done, I opted to fill that with a technical position. Rather than an administrative position. At the time, um, discussions with previous manager, the thought was we were going to supplement. Um, the administrative need with someone else part-time or figure out something. You know, a couple of years have gone by. We haven't done that. Um, my staff has absorbed um, that additional administrative work. Um, and finance does help with the financial related tasks that that position.
Finance has absorbed work as well.
Yep. Um, so they do take care of the financial aspects, but I, I, I've lost in the fact that I have administrative work as far as filing letters that need to go out. You know, answering phone calls when it gets really busy, helping out at the front counter. Um, we're really limited in that respect. So. Th- this is just a follow-up request to what I was initially expecting a couple of years ago is, you know, a couple of thoughts were. Um, there's a part-time position in building. Maybe we can supplement that position with another part-timer that can. Um there's a part time position in building. Maybe we can supplement that position with another part timer that can work for both of us and. Be situated in the office where they can handle answering calls for both departments and helping out the counter for both departments. Um or or possibly looking at converting that to a full time position. Um but it would be very helpful to have uh that type of capability again. Um instead of my technical staff, you know, stuff in envelopes, which is what we have. And I inspect them, I see a project mayor stuff in envelopes, which is. It's not efficient use of their time and their abilities.
And I guess one question. Bonnie brought it up. Bob Kellher does it right now. He's got a full time position elsewhere. Would he be the one? Going to the.
Oh, you have to remember Bob's going over to radio. He's taking John Eichner.
Oh, yeah, that that was the other.
Yeah, so he's given notice to Derek.
Gotcha.
So we're gonna need to, if 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 we don't get a full time, now we gotta try to find a part part timer who's willing to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I've had this discussion with Bob since I got here. It's not a reflection of him, but I I've said it since I walked in the door that, you know, I've told Bob I put in this request numerous times. Just because he and he understands the need for it more better than anybody. Um so he's been supportive of that, uh understanding that there's a need for it. So yeah, there's something that's going to have to happen in the near term, whether it we have to refill a part timer. This would be an ideal time to move it to a full time position and not have to, you know, have anybody lose a job.
And are we paying any claims uh from our insurance for trips?
I mean. Um, I don't know. Michael, you'd probably have to call Kerma and find out.
I'll get that information.
We'll get it for you, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, so I mean, I don't off the off the trail, but if a slip or I mean a trip or fall would happen on someone's private property, wouldn't that fall on the owner of that property?
Yeah, these are trips and falls that occur in the public right away. So the way the the order written, it's it's the private property owner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalks. Although when somebody falls and gets hurt on town property, regardless of that, the town is the one who gets sued.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Well, i- isn't it true we get food no matter what?
Ye- yes, even though it's not necessarily our responsibility in these cases.
Yeah, they just go to the deepest pockets, so.
And and it is our ultimately our property. So we were telling owners, the way that we're telling owners that you are responsible to maintain the sidewalk on the town's property. Those are the types of issues we're talking about, not necessarily their private walks going on to their private properties.
Okay. Okay, anybody else with any questions before we?
Um we just, yeah, have one other position and then I know Derek's got to go to P and Z, so. And that is not in the book, but Derek and I have been talking a lot and I sent you information on that. Um Derek is fabulous about getting grants, but. There's going to be a ton of grants coming up. On that, in fact, we just applied for another one for five million, I think, Derek, right? Through federal funds, there is no way his staff and Derek especially is going to be able to oversee. All this funding and all these projects and not. Either complete them in time and we lose the funding or not be quality that's happening. And we just have to make sure that you guys realize that uh this is going to be an issue. Um in fact, I brought it up today at the municipal CROG committee meeting because I have a feeling we're not the only town that's going to be going through this. So uh it's something we're gonna have to think about, um because you know, we've already lost some state money. Because we weren't using it in a timely manner. I'd hate to see us lose all this money. And Derek, you may want to speak to it too.
Yeah, I'll try and keep it brief. Does everyone see the the two page now of data of projects up? Okay, so. Uh yeah, so I just wanted to to point out, I mean, we've talked about this a little bit from time to time when I've come in front of you, but. Um this is a a summary of what we have for for state funding projects. Uh we have quite a bit. Right now, we have twelve point four million. Um what I've listed here going, starting at the top is when the money was allocated. And where we stand with a lot of these projects and, you know, we have projects going back to twenty sixteen um loss it. Uh low sip, I'm sorry, uh funding that we get for, you know, reconstructing Dix Road that hasn't been started. Um two thousand eighteen Belle Pont Dam. We were just getting to uh looking at proposals from consultants, so we're just getting that going. Um two thousand eighteen, you know, Main Street Decorative Lights has not been started. Yes, there's a number of these projects that are. Um some have been started, but many have not. And I've I've got probably after this year, we've got two designed for about four million dollars. The the rest of that money is another, you know, six or seven projects that I have not been able to get to. Um so part of the discussion was with Bonnie is, you know, there's a lot of, as she said, a lot of funding coming down the pike. Um we just went through a very rigorous process, even with having a grant writer involved. Took up a lot of mine and my staff's time over the last couple of weeks to get data to them so they can put together an application, which was. Was very time consuming and much more than I anticipated. So the discussion or the thought was, we just really should have a strategic plan. On how we're going to manage um applying for and then if we get these fundings, how we're going to manage the funds that come through to see these projects through construction. Not just for engineering, but for all the departments. And the one thing that Bonnie had mentioned, I was thinking too, is to have some kind of a. A capital improvement program manager that can help conceptualize these projects. Help collect data for applications, get applications put in, then once money comes in, help at least do the administrative portions of the projects. I mean, there. A lot of these funding, you know, I I as everyone knows, you get state funding, there's reporting, there's a lot of information you got to provide them throughout the whole project. If we have someone that can help coordinate that from start through construction. It would be very helpful for staff to be able to just focus on for my, in my case, you know, the technical aspects of the project and not get bogged down with all the administrative. You know, like I said earlier in this meeting, I have a full time staff that is busy with our routine projects. So in all these projects. You know, we've been, I've been very aggressive going after funds and we've been fortunate to get a lot of the funds. But now we're in a place where we gotta, we gotta start spending it. You know, no one has come to me and said, you're about to lose it yet, but we. We will get there if we don't figure out a way to get these done. And and some of these, um the funding could be used for consultants and I'm gonna. Get that going as quickly as I can. Some of these were intended for in-house design and we'll do them as quickly as we can, but. I mean, I'm looking for get all this work done that we currently have. I'm looking year years out, probably four or five years out to try and get through most of these. Um as listed on the bottom of the second page on the right, there are a couple more applications pending. We have over a million for lots of Great Meadow Road Phase Two that we haven't heard back on yet. Um which I think has a pretty strong application to get because we already got money for Phase One, eight hundred fifty eight thousand. And then we just put in this federal raise grant, which is almost eight million dollars. Um, you know, again, which is would be great and I just, I, you know, for the town to be able to maximize the efficiency and the benefit of the funds that'll be available, we. We just need to have, I think, a a better strategic plan on how to handle it and how to manage that.
So are you asking for a plan or for a person to be the coordinator of this? What's the, what's the ask here, Derek?
I think we're talking about a person, even if it's a temporary position for three, four, or five years, whatever it may be. To to get these, to get us from where we are, because right now, and I can't speak for other departments, for me. It's like we're throwing everything at the wall and seeing what sticks. I've had multiple applications for the same type of projects, you know, put in and some of those are actually being awarded to us. And we have some overlap now, so.
So, you know, what is this? What's the proposal to us, Derek? Is it how much? What's the person called and where does it go on the budget?
Well, that's all something that I I just want to bring it up for a discussion with the new town manager coming on board. Um I think it's something we we should talk about. Um to not be at risk at losing potential funds, but also to make sure we we manage the process properly, so we are. Um you know, getting the funds we can use and then being able to actually get the projects done. I mean, I've gotten calls. Um from Senator Fonfarah, who's gotten us some money for a couple of projects. And he asked me, why isn't it started yet? I have to explain to him, I I don't have time yet. I haven't gotten to it. We have two or three projects in front of that. So it's going to be a couple of years out.
Um he he called me as well. Okay. Is it a full time position or a part time position?
If you're gonna, you know, the other thing I was thinking when Derek mentioned this to me, if you're gonna do it, get it full time because. The others, the other piece you're gonna have a lot of capital on is buildings um and projects like that. So you're either gonna have to hire a construction firm. Um who is a certain percentage of projects, or you're gonna have to hire or hire a body. Um and like I said, I'm gonna be talking to some of the other managers. Does it, well, I don't know if it would even work. It doesn't make some sense to do something like this regionally because um none of us are going to be have the staffing to handle all this federal money coming at us.
When we uh, when we did the uh capital uh. Improvement uh forty eight items, we included item twenty. Uh administrative costs to implement project, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Some of that for Derek's programs.
No, that was only for the buildings.
I thought it was for everything and we just used the percentage of.
No, I didn't include any, I didn't include any of Derek's current projects, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think the intent with that was it was a percentage of the ARPA project requests.
Right.
Which are not, we which is separate from all the federal funding that's coming down the pike. I mean, that's additional to that.
But it is some of your projects per se, you know, dam repairs and so forth, but not ones that are on this list.
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Derek, following up on what Matt was saying, um is this a request that you want to make to us down the road when? And talk to, I heard you say talk to the new town manager, because this is a need you think we're gonna have in the next months and couple of years? Or is this something you're looking for potentially now with the ARPA funds or a budgeted item? And do you have a estimated cost?
I thinking from what I'm hearing from the state that that this money is going to start flowing very soon, you know, by the end of the year, so. I I, you know, I I don't have those answers. I I and I'm not looking at just for engineering. I'm just talking town wide. I think it's a discussion we should have. Um, okay, I I think, I think we we gotta look at return on investment, so maybe we hire somebody for a short, you know, duration. That can do a certain amount of work that's going to have a cost, but we gotta look at what is the potential upside on what the town can get for funding, because this may be. A once in a generation opportunity to get funding for some of this work that, you know, we have a hard time funding capital projects and and a lot of these capital projects can be funded through this type of.
Got it, and I totally agree. It's, it is a lot of once in a generation type funds and we don't want to miss out, so. Uh makes sense to me. Thank you.
I I I would suggest that we need to come up with some kind of placeholder dollar amount for this budget.
All right, we'll work on that. We'll put it together with a job description and all that.
Otherwise, you're gonna be end of the year money, so you're gonna be coming in. We won't have any. Anything in the bank to uh. To hire the person with.
Okay, we'll get it to you. Anything else for Derek?
Okay.
All right, lucky Derek gets to go to P and Z now.
Sorry for keeping everyone else waiting. Good luck, Steve.
Thanks, Derek.
They're gonna get, don't worry, they'll pay you back tomorrow, Derek.
Well, I'll hear about it.
Um.
So you're out of luck.
Was that, was that Tom?
I said Derek got all the money, so.
Um that that's it, I know, I'm I'm. You're right.
Steve's budget's on page thirty three. And Steve, do you want to introduce Anthony?
Yes, um Anthony Barrio, he's assistant building uh inspector. He's on somewhere. He's also on. So I figured it would be good for him to join me to see how the budget process works. Um like Bonnie says, we're working on page thirty three. Um. Uh the building department budget consists mainly of employees and and operating costs. We have no additional programs or anything like that, so I'll just go. Um through what we have for budgets. Uh the first section is um salary and benefits. Those are all contractual. Uh the big change there is zoning was moved to the town manager's budget as requested by the town manager. So we have the zoning enforcement officer that was moved to the town manager and the ZBA commission clerk, which was moved to the town manager. Um going down to the line items. Um. Copy and binding, um it was eight hundred. I increased it by two hundred. We use uh multi-carbon inspection reports. And the price has gone up on those, so I just added two hundred dollars to cover that cost. Um legal notices or legal advertisements, uh ZBA was twenty six ninety one. That was reduced out of. Sixty two twenty three, which leaves uh, which leaves thirty five forty two as a remainder in that, so that actually came down. Uh travel training in dues, um ZBA was a total of five fifty that was backed out of that. And that brings us to twenty seven seventy five. I increased that by a thousand dollars because the state's adopting new codes this year. Beginning October first, we're going to a twenty twenty two state building code. So I need to buy a a complete set of building codes plus some secondary building codes to have on, to have on hand. Um support services was taken out last year, so that no longer exists. Um office machinery stayed the same. Clothing was reduced by six hundred dollars to cover uh zoning. Zonings portion. Uh general office supplies remains the same. And equipment went from three hundred, I include, I increased that by two hundred dollars from three hundred to five hundred. Just because we're in the in the process of looking for better flashlights. Um we're looking for some type of LED rechargeable flashlights. Um the ones that we use are pretty beat up, so I increased that by two hundred dollars. So I mean, that's it for the basic budget. Any questions on that before I move on to the revenue or?
Steve is boring.
Yeah, I know, compared to Derek, I'm like nothing, right? Um, okay, so our estimated, hang on a second. So our estimated budgeted revenue was four hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year. We had some big jobs come in towards the, within the last month, month and a half, a forty forty six era road. A huge uh four story self-storage. We had one oh five on Progress Drive, Young Pharmaceuticals. Two-story building there and we had uh twelve ten Salistine Highway, the Starling Medical uh interior renovations. So right now, we're about four hundred and one thousand, uh little over four hundred and one thousand dollars. So we actually hit our, hit our goal. We're at. Uh. Um total for construction costs about a little over twenty three million. So that's pretty much where we are. Any questions or?
Is that revenue on this page or where where do I find the revenue? Or I should have been writing it all down?
Yeah, I don't know if the revenue is of, I don't think the revenue is available.
Michael, where is, what page is that on?
Page one and two.
Oh, page one and two, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Anything for Steve?
Well, I don't know about those flashlights.
Yeah, okay. All right, we can, we can, we can cut those out. That's not a problem. I know, you know, that's right, that's right. I'm gonna look extra close, Tom.
Shouldn't just in the spirit of being in the oldest town in Connecticut, shouldn't we just have lanterns?
Yeah, that's a good idea. We could do the old, yeah, the old kerosene lanterns. That would work. That would work.
All right, I guess that's it then.
All right, guys. Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Anthony is up and the fire marshals on page forty two.
Thanks, Steve.
Hello, everybody. Um yes, as Bonnie said, uh my budget's on page forty two. Um the line items for salaries, um it's been pretty consistent for the past um six or seven years when I. Um was able to get a part time inspector. He works nineteen and a half hours a week. Um the workload continues to increase around here. Um the town gets a lot of work out of one and a half people here, not to mention even the administrative side. I think Derek mentioned uh two years ago when we lost our uh administrative assistant. Um finance does help out with some of that, um but that requires the two of us to do probably more administrative work or. Actually being in the office more than we really need to be. That means less work gets out in the field to try to catch up on reports, mailings, things like that. Um. We also have a line item for part time um inspectors slash fire watch. That's, I have two other certified. Um fire inspectors that are in the volunteer fire department. Um they pitch in for when we have some larger fires or special events. Or if I'm on vacation to uh help out with uh my part time guy, because yeah, my part time guy's only here nineteen and a half hours a week. So if I'm on vacation or away, sometimes there is a little lull here with manpower, but we try to do our best. Um again, the next is overtime. That stays pretty stagnant. I don't think I've gone over that in the past couple of years, so that's. That amount there is uh should be sufficient. Um the rest, healthcare and those items are anything I can control. Um the next is training. Before um when I presented my budget, I did do a few, um some cuts. To the budget compared to last year.
to the budget compared to last year, um, based on, I do have some leftover money this year that I plan to um use. So, and then Bonnie came back to us asking for some more cuts, so we made some more additional cuts to our budget. Um, the big thing with training, I'm probably gonna have a decent amount left over this year, cause the COVID problem still exists. So there's less training opportunities, but I'm hoping it's starting to free up, they're starting to offer more training um available. So hopefully after July first with this new budget year, I can get caught up in some of my training. Um, the next portion there, as you see, support services, there is an increase there. Um, for my, part of that is um software that we pay for, for the alarm monitoring at the police station that I manage. Um, the other thing is NFPA standards that I have online, um, that I use every day. The subscription series, it's a lot cheaper to use subscription series and to buy new books every year. So we've, that's been pretty successful, even though it seems to be a big ticket item, but it's something I use every day. Um, there's fifteen hundred dollars for a tablet, and I think when Chief Bailey goes next, they'll probably, he'll be able to explain that. Um, the present software system we use to manage my office and the fire department for record keeping. That's fire incidents, training records, inspections, personnel information. The present firehouse system we have, it's called Firehouse Software, we've had it for ten years. We've been put on notice that Firehouse is being shut off as of December thirty-first. It's kind of antiquated software, even though it's working for us right now. It works off Internet Explorer. Um, it's, again, this is more above my head for IT people, but the, what it's written on is, is antiquated. So they're doing away with that product. Another company bought them, so sort of forcing us to go to their product. I know Chief Bailey and Assistant Chief Mother have been working with some vendors to uh look at some new software to manage that. I originally had a portion of that in my budget, Bonnie had it. Um, actually, it's gonna save us money if the fire department purchases the whole thing and then I split off on it. So uh, that's something we're definitely gonna need. I'm just putting a plug in for Chief Bailey, because that's something, we're not gonna be, be able to operate without that software to manage both my office and the fire department. So I have a fifteen hundred dollar item in there, because right now we have iPads to run the next-gen system, which is our dispatch system, but this new software program doesn't work on iPads. So we're now, we're forced to go out and buy a Chromebook or a Windows-based tablet, so I can do my inspections. I also have some money left over this year, so I was gonna use the money left over this year to buy one and then money in the budget next year to buy the second one, so myself and my inspector will both have the tablets when we do our inspections. It makes it a lot easier. Um, we can, right from the location, we can email the uh, the building owner with the violations or the records or whatever we need to do. So uh, it should work out very well, but again, it's just forcing us to buy some additional technology. Um, everything else is pretty standard in there. Um. That we use special agency supplies, it's fire prevention equipment um, that we buy or handouts, things like that, tools, sometimes I need for fire investigations to replace equipment, I might go through. We did do a pretty good, we chopped the um clothing line item by seven hundred and fifty dollars. Like, again, I have some money left over this year, so I'll stock up on some uniforms um this year with this budget. And I think the thousand dollars should cover us for next year.
Question for Anthony?
Yeah, real quick, did you uh, the council get you the iPad? You asked for an iPad last year?
Correct, the iPad was supposed to replace the older iPad I have in my vehicle. We have not replaced that yet.
Okay.
I still have money in the account this year to be able to purchase that.
Gotcha. And this, but it would be a new, it wouldn't be a new iPad, you would need a new Windows-based.
Right, the present software we have now for fire inspections works on an iPad, the next-gen system for our dispatching works on iPads. All the new software, record management software that we're looking at, does not work on iPads, it's all Windows-based. So we're gonna be forced to buy at some point tablets to make this thing work. Um, to do our inspections.
Okay.
Quick question from me, Mayor, if I can.
Uh huh.
So first off, Anthony, thanks for all you do and appreciate all the storm updates too that you give us. And uh,
You're welcome.
Even though you're a forty-niners fan, I appreciate all your hard work. My question is on uh fire inspections from COVID to now. So in the last two years, were you doing fewer inspections because some folks didn't want you to inspect? And now are you doing more or your regular running inspection? So basically the question, did, did things change in, in what you do during the height of COVID?
Actually, I have the numbers in front of me. We actually did more inspections in twenty-twenty than we did in twenty-twenty-one. I, I hadn't, I think there was more problems getting in the buildings as COVID actually sort of moved on than it was when it first, um, we first had the outbreak. The inspection, we have an inspection program, so we have it based on occupancy and based on a monthly schedule. Um, the state has built into the fire code, some occupancies are once a year, some are two, some are once a year, some are once every two years, some buildings are once every three years. So it works in a rotating um basis, so the inspections sort of fluctuate depending on the one, two, or three-year cycle. Perfect example, like a warehouse has to be inspected every three years. Um, a church, a school, a residential is every year. So the inspections are really never um flatlined, they fluctuate year to year depending on the cycle, how the buildings fall in every year. So it was different.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I apologize. No, I was, you said you had the figures, how many you did in twenty and twenty-one?
And twenty-twenty was total of six hundred and eight inspections, and twenty-twenty-one was total of five hundred and forty-two inspections.
And that's you and a part-time inspector, right?
Yes. And that's not even, and, and I'll be frank, the inspection portion of our job is not even the busiest part. It mostly, it's the um, the customer, what we call the customer service part, that's code consulting, answering questions. Um, consult, talking to architects, working on permits, things like that. Like Steve said, we have some big projects coming in, so, you know, a project like forty-six Arrow Road, we've already had about six or seven meetings with the designers. We go back and forth, um, they change things. Um, so again, it, it's, when you get these larger products like uh, projects like the medical facility down the Salistine Highway, um, there's a lot of uh time and effort put in to make sure it gets done right.
Got it, thank you.
I just have one for you, Anthony.
Sure.
Going back at support services, uh, the town manager reduced that uh by fifteen hundred dollars. Are you getting what you need to, to accomplish, or are you okay with that fifteen hundred dollar reduction or?
To be frank, I can, I can use, I probably use another five hundred dollars would help out. But again, I filed, you know, Bonnie's lead, she asked for cuts, so I, you know, I did what I had to do. I, hopefully that'll make it. But if I can get at least five hundred dollars back, it would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Where would you want the five hundred back? What, put it into?
It would be back into the uh, where it's cut, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read with my glasses here.
Or service.
Special agency supplies.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Be Support Services, I misread it.
Yeah, but in.
The font's too small here on my computer.
I'm just trying to find out where the, Tom, where are you saying there's a fifteen hundred dollar cut in support services?
That's uh, down towards the bottom of the page, five-two-two-two-five, support services. It says new tablets for new inspection software, TM reduced by fifteen hundred.
Look above support services, Mike.
Yeah, but the bottom line goes from thirty-eight to fifty-three hundred. You move it over to admin services, the fifteen hundred. Eighteen hundred goes over to, so it looks like it's.
Now, Mr. Mayor, the, the original, the original price tag there should have been sixty-eight hundred, because we, we have, one of the tablets was cut out.
Got it, okay.
So it, it, it actually, even though it says reduced by fifteen hundred, it was actually, um, it was actually reduced. No, that's correct, it was reduced by fifteen hundred, right? That was the tablet that was removed.
But it doesn't move over to another line item?
No, it would be back in that fifty-two-two-two-five account to support services. And I'm actually guessing on that price, I, for the tablet, so I'm not even sure if that's gonna come in more or not. Cause we can't just buy regular tab, tablets, because you know, we're doing inspections, we're going to construction sites, so we have to buy a well, sort of like a Toughbook-type tablet, cause you know, if we drop it, we don't want this thing, you know, breaking all the time. So it's, you know, you might see advertised that Best Buy in some for like eight hundred dollars, but we have to buy something a little more significant for what we're doing.
Anybody else?
And then Anthony, page eight, real quick, emergency management, cause that's in with town manager.
Yeah, we'll just go over that. Um, if you have any questions on that, just the um, the emergency management budget's actually line items in the town manager's budget, it's just the stipends for myself and Karen. And then I believe there's a thousand dollars earmarked for uh, equipment and supplies. Um, we got the new, new EOC up and running um during this fiscal year and actually use very limited money um, from the operating budget. We had some money still left over from a grant we received a couple of years ago for emergency management. Um, and I believe we still have a small portion of money in there um to buy some of the new technology we bought. We uh, we moved the EOC downstairs um to the old health department. It is a smaller setup than it was in the town council chambers, but at least now here, it's uh, it's a little more functional. And obviously, they'll still let government still operate, cause even during the storm, you folks may have to gather for emergency orders or things like that. So we wanted to try to free up the town council chambers. Um, that room sort of become a catch-all for doing everything in there. So at least if we do have an emergency going on, um, all the department heads can come down here. We have uh, technology set up with um, with uh monitors. Um, we have uh two laptops that can be used, so we can communicate with the state using one monitor. We can watch the weather on another monitor, we can keep ever-source apprised, cause we can have direct communications with ever-source. Now, we can log into a portal and communicate with them directly. So uh, we uh, with not a lot of funding, we set up a pretty um, pretty high-tech system down here. So hopefully, we never have to use it, but again, we get these storms from time to time and it stretches our abilities. So uh, this should work up really nicely.
Do we get any grants for that, for the EOC?
Um, like I said, we, and again, I don't know, I forget what the fund was, I don't know if Mike can help. We had some leftover money from a, a grant, I think we received a couple of years ago. Um, that's what we use the money to buy the monitors and the laptops down here. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mike, but I forgot what that, that um grant was called, um, but we use that funding for that.
I don't remember either, Anthony, I'll let the follow-up.
Yeah, I believe there's like another thousand dollars still left in that, in that grant. Um, but again, we were able to allocate that money. Um, and also every year, we get the uh, the emergency grant from the state of Connecticut. So we get that funded every year, and I think it actually covers the stipends in the um operating, thousand-dollar operating funds we get for emergency management through the grant we get every year from uh, um, Department Emergency Management, Homeland Security. And we did apply for that grant, we should be getting the, um, get notification within the next month or so to see if we got it, and I'm sure we're getting it.
Bonnie, would this be something that the new grant writer for us would be able to look at?
Yes. Yeah, she actually met with all the department heads this morning, so Anthony, email Sonia and tell her you're looking for something.
Yeah, we, we talked briefly today, so yeah, she, she's on board with that. She, she was very helpful. So I'll reach out to her to see if we can get some, some additional funding. Uh, yeah, it worked out pretty well, so.
Okay.
And just, just an update on the um Everbridge that we purchased. Um, I was out of work for a few days, cause I was ill. Karen's ill now, so she's been out for a couple of days. But we have the backbones, we've built the backbone of it, so you should be seeing it out in the street shortly. Um, maybe the next two or three weeks, we'll start advertising it and folks will be able to uh opt into it and then we'll be able to use it for routine and emergency information to, to notify the public. Much like I said now with emails, we'll be able to use the Everbridge system um to update folks on different issues in town.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Welcome.
Um, all right, fire, Chief Bailey, page forty-four.
Can you hear me?
Uh, barely.
About now.
Yeah, that's better. So you just wanna hit on the highlights of your department, Mr. Bailey, and some of the things I already emailed to you to address?
Yeah, I can uh, I can hit on the, on the highlights, the uh, where the big increases, if they, if you are. Um, we did a two percent for our part-time clerk and a three percent for our officers down to uh the secretary and treasurer. Uh, that this line also includes it from an eight dollar a call to a nine dollar a call addition. Uh, you know, as you all know, these are twenty-seven, you know, twenty-four and seven employees, you know, at a very part-time rate. And uh, it really wasn't a huge increase, but an increase nonetheless. Uh, that's the salaries and wages line, uh, the workers' workers' comp pension. Uh, most of these have stayed pretty similar, within a couple hundred dollars. Um, support services went up. Oh, somebody had a question? No?
I don't think so.
All right, uh, the storm standbys with the new weather normal, uh, with reduced numbers, I've been putting guys in firehouses. No, go ahead, Bonnie. Oh, I thought you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
No.
Um, you know, we put guys in, the men and women of the fire service into the firehouses. You know, when we got a big snowstorm, hurricane, whatever's going through. Um. Support services is within a couple thousand, that's the storm standby. Um. The water's actually showing, I don't know, the water's up, and that's Bonnie, we uh, you had called MDC or somebody had called MDC on that to get an explanation, okay. You know, that is a, that's a number set for our hydrant rental through MDC. Um, electricity, natural gas, that's all through the town, Heather gives us those numbers. Uh, the rentals, the facilities, that's our Newington Training Tower, uh, that's a set fifteen hundred dollar cost. Um, the five hundred addition in office machinery is simply uh raising in-service costs, which most of these are here. Um, the repairs, property and maintenance, uh, that, that shows a sixty-seven hundred dollar increase. That's, that's simply just the cost we're paying, where we have overages in most of these lines this year. And I honestly don't see it getting any better. Um, this is a cautious estimate, but we're hoping we can get it done at that number. Uh, the diesel fuel is obviously a set price through the town. Uh, cleaning and household supplies, uh, obviously with COVID, not only are we getting more things, but they're more expensive. Uh, specialized agency went up about twelve hundred dollars. That's, that's simply just an increase in the cost of, that we're putting out. Um, clothing is a gear increase. Um, standard, the standards change and we have to keep up uh with the new gear. Um, pretty much everything is, is normal. When we get to the IT equipment and software, Anthony touched on that. And I see Derek Sola is on, so I think he would be the guest, the best guy to explain all of that. We've worked with Derek, and again, this will be a, a mutual venture between the fire department and the fire marshal's office. Uh, pretty much a half to do. Um, the equipment. The equipment, the equipment is simply the price of equipment. It just continues to rise. And, and again, this, we have overages in that this year. And, you know, hopefully we can do it with this number. I think we can. And, and keep everything maintained, updated and have the best to protect our community.
Questions? I have one. Rich?
Yeah.
The clothing?
Yep.
Turnout gear and so forth. Do we, we have less people on staff, correct?
Yes.
So would, would that number tend to go down even with the price increase of the materials or?
Well, it depends on the age of their gear. The gear is only good for a certain amount of time and once it shows where it gets replaced. This I actually had in our C N E F. Initially, and, and I think I can sit down with Bonnie and work with this number a little bit.
Any other questions? If not, Chief Bailey could go on to C N E F.
Hang on, one. I don't want to nickel and dime. Pest control, it looks like it's going up at company three. Do we have a problem over there?
What line are you on, Mr. Mayor?
Pest control under, on page forty-five, under five-two-two-seven-five. It went from five hundred and forty to twenty-one sixty.
Hang on, I'm not seeing it.
Five forty. Last year. Proposed twenty-one sixty. I just want to get an idea of what's going on.
All right, now you're under. I'm sorry, what were you under again?
Five-two-two-seven-five repairs and maintenance.
Yeah.
Five up, Rich.
Yeah, I don't have that breakdown in front of me for some reason. That, that is blank. I will look into that tomorrow morning. That, that's absolutely not correct.
All right.
I will, yeah, I'll report to Bonnie on that in the morning.
Okay. And then P P E inspection in the same column. What do we do with, is it personal protective equipment?
Is that something to do? Yes. All of our equipment, all of our equipment gear packs, everything we use.
Okay, I mean, it's only a thousand dollar increase, but I don't know what we had prior. Unless the twelve thousand was brand new last year and we're just bumping it up by about a thousand this year.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, Mr. Mayor, it's just, it's just the cost of us, you know, these things that have, they have to come in. Everything has to get flow tested, tested, you know, gear repairs. And it's just the price of things are just going up.
Yeah, clothing's up eight thousand. Building materials and supplies, five-three-three-four-five. Went from three thousand and then there's nothing this year for that. Miscellaneous improvements, hardware and supplies. Just wondering where, what that savings is.
That went from three thousand to four thousand.
Oh, we moved the four thousand over to.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
I just go down. I T is a big upgrade. That's nearly double.
Yes, and initially, and I say initially, I've worked with Mark Modder, Anthony and Derek. I should say they've worked together and it looks like a thirty thousand dollar program. Which we, the increase this year would be to do it in three years, ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand. And the rest would be in the upgrades for the, for the tough folks or, you know, what have you that, that Anthony touched on. And I think Derek would certainly do a better job than I.
How about the last item, Chief? The furniture?
The furnishing, the, yeah, she, Bonnie cut that two thousand dollars. I mean, to be honest, I could use twenty thousand. It's, it's just, you know, things are degrading. You know, we're certainly going to make that work, you know, that's, that's definitely an item that has nothing to do with our safety. And, you know, we'll, we'll make that work. That's not a problem at all.
Does that go into firehouse one?
That is, no, it got moved into, that's the general administration line. That would, I would split that between the three companies somehow or just replace the worst and move forward.
How are we doing with furnishing in company one? I know that's been a sore subject.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's good, not great. Our watchrooms really take a beating. And that's, that's really what I would direct, you know, any monies we could get back would be into the watchrooms. You know, that equipment just is, you know, it's, it's all season, all weather, you know, gear, no gear. It's, you know, it does take a beating.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions?
Rich, do you want to go over C N E F?
I certainly.
Page eighty.
I think, is everybody there?
Yep, we're here.
No, no, just on that page. This list was obviously longer. Bonnie was given the list and, and has made some cuts to it. The, what do we have? And we have battery fans. Those are our exhaust fans that are aging. And are going to be in need of replacement. So we're looking for the upgrade to go to the battery fans, which, like everything else, it'd just be easier, more efficient. You know, we won't have to drag generators around. Usually when using these exhaust fans, it's powering off a truck. You know, obviously if there's an issue in the house, we're not going to be using their power. The second thing on your list, I believe, is the ticks. Those are called, those are thermal imaging cameras. Those look into walls, look for down firefighters, gives us a heat signature, a temperature for cold and hot. The third thing I believe that you have is the four gas meters. You know, that gives us the hazardous environment readings, you know, basically everywhere we are. We use those before, after fires, C O issues, things of that nature. The pagers. The pages are just, they're just an every year thing. They, they don't have a huge amount of life to them. The pages we're using now are supported. So this would be adding, you know, as they fail and we replace, this would be replacing all of those. Fourteen is a good number for that. Hose, hose goes through, we test it every year. We have it tested every year. And this is for replacement and additions for some spare. This is a number that I could meet with Bonnie with and we could work with that a little bit. And then I think the last thing you have on your list is the gear. The gear, we can sit down. I mean, it's a small number, but we could, we could move, move on a little bit there.
What's the difference between this firefighter turnout year and what Tom mentioned in the budget?
What do you mean the difference?
Well, you had twenty-five in the other, didn't you?
Thirty in, in what? I don't know.
So Rich, you had money in the operating budget, but you also have it in the C N E F.
Okay, this year's operating?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, he must have. Find this year's.
Was the last item on page forty-six. Wrong.
Yeah, I, I got it in three separate pages.
It wasn't forty-six, I'm mistaken.
Yeah, page, page.
Yeah, turnout, turnout gear full set, twenty-one, twenty-two was twenty-five thousand. The thirty, the twenty-one, twenty-two, the, that whole line is forty-two thousand. And it covers, you know, class A's, class B's, class C's, pants, it covers everything. So it's not just gear.
Yeah, but you have, you have turnout gear, full set thirty thousand. And then on capital, you have another forty-eight thousand. Is that what? Is that a duplication or is that what you?
You know, it must be, because I'm, I'm looking at turnout gear full set for twenty-one, twenty-two is twenty-five thousand. So that's, that's not nearly, that's not thirty sets of gear.
Rich, why don't you and I meet on this and go through it again?
Okay.
And real quickly, the chief, the thermal imaging cameras, is that to replace cameras we already have? Is it additional for new cameras?
Uh, yeah, no, it would be for new, you're talking about the thermal imagers?
Yes.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Yes, it would be, it would be replacing, we'd, we'd leave two, because they're not just, as the technology advances, they just don't support it. So we'd leave, we'd leave two in the system as spares and replace on the apparatuses new.
Okay, thank you.
If, Rich, if we buy the air packs with, you wanted ten with thermal imaging units, do you still need to buy the cameras?
Yes, we, I would take them off the packs. For now, that is something they could add on as years go by, depending on which packs we buy.
In other words, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take the option of the thermal imaging units with the new packs?
I would just, just in officer packs. We wouldn't be outfitting all the packs. It would just be officer packs. You're talking about the capital improvement line?
Yeah, I mean, you, you have, in C N E F, you have the thermal imaging cameras, four of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
If, if we buy air packs with thermal imaging capability.
Yes.
Do you still need cameras?
Yes.
Can, can you tell me why? I don't understand.
Yeah, well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't outfit all of the packs with a thermal imaging camera.
Right, you talked about, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, you cut out.
You talked about ten air packs with imaging units.
Yes, and that's just the officer seat. This would give the ability for others to have it. It's, it's a very, it's a high cost. You know, if you did all the packs with it, I think having the officer who's leading the lines into a fire with that capability. Would be fine and then we would, you know, the next administration can, can add to the packs as much as they wanted. I'd still want the handheld units without question.
So Chief, what, basically, I, I guess this is might, might be what Deputy Mayor is asking is, what, what would you need to just keep your team safe? Like baseline, what do you need to keep your team safe and be able to do your job for the community?
For the tick cameras?
Correct.
All four.
And those would be handheld by?
Those are handheld units, yes.
By officers?
Go ahead.
And then for the air tank apparatuses, you wouldn't get every single one of them with a thermal imaging camera?
Well, that's right. I talked to the deputy mayor. We would go with ten initially and they could add on. This would be new technology for us as far as putting them on the packs.
So if I'm looking at page eighty-one, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but under the. Capital Improvement, number sixteen. Would that decrease the six hundred and eighteen thousand by any or?
No, we put in the ten for that.
What he's saying, Mike, is he, he needs ten air packs with thermal imaging units. Plus four handheld imaging units. Is that correct, Rich?
Uh, well, the, out of the C N E F, it is the four.
Yeah.
Out of the capital improvement in that number is ten.
Those ten ticks are included in the six hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're, they're a lot smaller. They go on the pack. That's why the, the prices may not look like they, they match, because they don't. The ones on the packs are cheaper. And by cheaper, I mean by cost. You know, they're smaller and they're integrated with the pack.
How many thermal imaging cameras do we have now and how old are they?
I don't have the ages, but we do have four now.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Bailey?
Rich, you have anything in capital?
Well, the, the pack replacement.
Right.
At number sixteen, which with, with no disrespect, I don't know who makes the list, but I, I would think.
Committee.
I would think that firefighter safety would, would be a little more important than miscellaneous drainage improvements. To be number sixteen. Is a little discouraging. As a matter of fact, it's very discouraging. You know, some of the things I see one through fifteen, actually I can tell you all of one through fifteen don't match firefighter safety. You know, how, how can anything, you know, be above fireman breathing? I, I just, I don't understand that. Maybe this isn't the quorum to discuss that. But I think moving forward, you know, there should probably, and no Bonnie, I don't want the job. There should probably be somebody from fire police on it.
I think, Rich, I think what you might be looking at, and I wasn't privy to how the different individuals voted. But there was four people on the committee in capital, I believe, that voted. And so one through sixteen could have all been fours. You know, in other words, they could have all been equally ranked as a mandatory requirement. So. That's, that's the only thing, fact. I know their, their priorities were safety and mandates before everything else. So that's the only thing I can think. I, I can't imagine I'm participated in all those meetings. I can't imagine that anybody felt that you guys weren't important compared to a dam repair.
Hey Chief, I just, I just want to throw in there, this is absolutely the purpose of making case for your budget. At all means, if you feel that something of that nature needs to be put on a important level, then this place for you to make that, that call. And, and Chief, maybe, maybe you want to address number sixteen and kind of explain what that is, because not everybody may, may know what that is.
That's replacing all our air packs, every one of them, sixty-eight number. They were replaced fifteen years ago through a grant, through the state. And we are currently in the grant process again. It can, I can tell you that it is made through the first hurdle and we're approaching the second hurdle. It's a FEMA grant and, you know, we're waiting on news. It should be awarded, what they say is June, maybe July. So it, it would basically replace all of our breathing apparatus. You know, the sky, the, the air packs that we wear going into hazardous atmospheres fires. You know, the sky, the, the air packs that we wear going into hazardous atmospheres, fires, what have you. Every one of them. That's why the number's so big.
Anything else for the chief? All right. Library, which is page sixty-three. Brooke, will you um, introduce everybody, please?
Yes, so thank you to the town council for having this meeting. Um, we have joined by, with library board members Martha Caneely, Hannah Granfield, Mary P, uh, Mary used to be on the library board. Lori Rona, um, I'm trying to look across, uh, Michelle DePaulo, Diane McAdams, Kristen Michaels. And I, I don't know who this other phone number is, if that's a library board, two eight oh five seven three four. Perhaps not a library board member. Um, but uh, yeah, so thank you for uh, uh, having us this evening. Um, I'll just get started, uh, I'm gonna do a share screen, which I believe I can do. So, as you heard again and again and again last evening, uh, the library is truly one of the treasures of the town of Weathersfield, and we proudly provide for the informational and educational and recreational needs of the Weathersfield community and hope to continue to do so uh, moving forward. In this uh, infograph, which is a lot of the data that we've compiled in the proposed budget book that you have all received. Um, in the past, previous fiscal year, we had over ten, nearly eleven thousand library cardholders. We were able to offer a hundred and seventy-eight programs. Uh, we circulated a hundred and eighty-six thousand items, um, which is above the state average. Uh, people asked over eighteen thousand questions, we do record that. Um, and the library's computer and wifi network were accessed over sixty-five hundred times. Um, so we're quite, quite proud of that. Here is a sampling of what we are currently doing, we just recently wa, soft-launched our Weathersfield Reads, and in collaboration with this historical society and the high school, we did a One Book One Town, uh, Our Town, the play. Um, and that was quite a successful program that was culminated at, uh, the historical society, that was great. Um, we recently had a robotics demo for kids during spring break, um, which went over very well, uh, with a, with a high school, um, that specializes in science. Um, and so the kids and families seemed to really enjoy that. Um, we host, uh, hosted a program recently, Frugal Living. Uh, we are very sensitive to people's budgets, and we actually hosted a, a pro, a Zoom program for that, uh, which is great, and then coming up, in case nobody knew, um, Holocaust Remembrance Day is coming up, and we do have a Holocaust survivor coming to speak who was, uh, lived in the Jewish ghetto in Budapest. Um, during that time, and he's going to share his memories. Um, so that's an example of, of things that we have going currently. And then, looking forward to the future, um, which I believe is a very exciting future here at the Weathersfield Library, is we recently received um, with a massive lift by Amy Bello, uh, one point and other state legislators as well, um, uh, one point seven million dollar grant uh, to fund the library redesign project, the project is currently funded at one point nine eight nine. Um, so we're still a couple hundred thousand dollars short. Um, but very, very excited that this plan, uh, can move forward. Um, and it's the library design project, for those of you who, who haven't had a chance to, um, see the conceptual designs of this, is massively expanding the teen space, renovating the mezzanine level, lower level carpeting, and redesigning the front room, uh, the entrance area of, of the library, so very, very excited about that. What I would like to, uh, then go into is the email that I forwarded to all of you today, which is a slightly different version of the pages that you received from, uh, Mike O'Neil. And so this, I, I put it in the same format, and I will show you where the differences are. Um, but we'll go through this, uh, very quickly, uh, line by line. Um, at the top, half of the document, um, is the salaries. Um, I'm at the top as the library director, um, the union full-time, and there are union part-time staff. And, um, they're all slated to contractually receive two percent wa, two percent, uh, wage increases. Um, and this current year, they received a two percent wage increase, and next year, twenty-three, twenty-four, they'll be receiving a point five percent, uh, increase, and so over a three-year contract, it is four point five percent, which is not keeping up with inflation. Um, but that's, that's the current, uh, that's what it currently is, is in there, it's calculated in there. Um, the non-union part-time staff, um, is slated to either receive a minimum wage increase or a two percent pay increase, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, this current year. Um, they did not receive anything except what was required by minimum wage. So we froze the wages of non-union part-time staff. And moving further down, uh, so that total is about a nineteen thousand dollar increase for salaries. Employee insurance, I, I mean, it's gone down a little bit, about nine hundred dollars, it looks like. Um, health insurance is an increase of fifty-three thousand dollars. Sorry, I jumped too far. Uh, pension is an increase of, the defined benefit, the pension is an increase of about sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. The defined contribution is an increase of about thirty-five hundred dollars. So the total for all that is over ninety thousand dollars of an increase. Um, so there's that. Um, moving further down, uh, workers' comp is up a hundred dollars. I've kept copying and binding flat. No, I actually, I'm sorry, I apologize, I de, I decreased that. Uh, travel, training, and dues remains flat. Professional services, which is the insurance for the library board and their fiduciary responsibility that we are required to carry, um, is just under a thousand dollars. I do not, it has not really gone up very much, and we do do a market check from time to time on that. Um, library programmings, we have kept flat, even though we would really like to increase that. Technology support services, I did add twenty thousand dollars. Um, and I'm making up about eight thousand of that elsewhere. Um, and it is, if you, if you see the last, the previous fiscal years under tech support, where it's a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventeen, we're averaging a hundred and I think twenty-six or twenty-nine thousand dollars a year in tech support services, so that is our electronic databases. Um, some of the places held flat during the pandemic, and now they've starting to increase. It also includes the cost, which is nearly forty thousand dollars of our consortium, our shared catalog, um, which is really important and is a cost savings. Um, and so that's our, our date, mostly our databases. Custodial services, um, we did achieve a savings this year, so many thanks to, uh, Mike and Sally and other staff who worked on the RFP for this. Um, for custodial services, so it did go down. I am, it, it's a little too early to say how pleased I am, but I am pleased, uh, thus far. Um, but that was, has been a savings of about four thousand dollars for us. Postage and delivery remains flat, at a hundred dollars. Labor relations, we don't have any costs, anticipated costs. Telephone and communications are basically our internet, twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars of that amount is for telephone. The remaining amount is our internet, we do get it different, a lower internet price than, say, other departments because we are a public library. Um, so we're getting a very, very good rate. Um, our office machinery services is our support contract, uh, for our current RFID. Um, and that's held flat, it did come down, um, but we are on dated equipment, and we would like to, you know, upgrade that. Uh, repair and maintenance, uh, we are at four thousand dollars. Um, and that's just repair and maintenance around the building for, you know, different things that we need to fix. Um, specialized agency supplies, a lot of this is our barcodes, um, the wrapping for the books, um, and that's at eight thousand dollars, and you can see that we've lowered that over, over time. Um, that cost and what we're spending on that. Um, and, and we do get from other consortiums discounted rates for that. Um, so we're always looking for a bargain on, on any supply we can get. Uh, building materials, uh, was lowered down by like fifty-nine dollars. Um, this, this budget used to be, I wanna say in the six thousand dollar range. Um, we have lowered that this current year. Some of these, uh, supplies are things that, uh, ARPA grant that the library received um, last year, um, we've been able to kind of pre-purchase, say, um, paper towels and, and, uh, some cleaning supplies that we need. Um, so we were able to pre-purchase that using ARPA money, so we did lower that a little bit. Our general office supplies is, uh, at nine thousand dollars. Our library books and other media, you know, other things that you can check out, um, is now at a hundred thousand dollars, I did lower that, so that's another three thousand dollars that I, I lowered in this category, and then ten thousand dollars for our IT equipment and software, and so we refresh and replenish and, and whatnot. Um, and so we've, we've been able to maintain us, you know, a schedule that we, you know, rotate the computers out every five years or so for their use, uh, and whatnot from that, so. Um, what is reflected in the budget in the book is where the town manager has put in a hundred thousand dollar reduction. Um, which I in the library board do not believe that we can sustain and keep our current service. Um, and that would put us back a couple of years to a, a budget from a couple of years ago. Um, and, you know, that's difficult when you have health insurance driving ha, half that cost and, you know, contractual, you know, salary increases and whatnot, so. Um, but that's, you know, that was, uh, put into the, the budget book, and, and I understand that. Um, but, and it was actually, uh, finance needed to tag it into a specific line, they tagged it into IT equipment. So you'll see in parentheses about a nine, a negative for ninety thousand dollars, um, and that is just not what, you know, and that's just not. Yeah, we're not negative ninety thousand IT equipment, but the hundred thousand had to be put somewhere. Um, but, uh, and this, what I am showing you on the screen and what I emailed to you earlier today does not reflect that, so. Um, the town manager's, uh, proposed budget was two million, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine, and the library board's proposed budget is two million, one hundred and sixty-two, three ninety-nine. Um, and if you look below in the chart here on the screen, you can see that ninety-two thousand is personnel-related and twelve thousand is non-personnel-related. Um, you know, so that, that, there's that. If there are cuts to, um, the library board's proposed budget, two point one sixty-two, three ninety-nine, um, the process is, is I make recommendations to the library board for their consideration, and my recommendation would strive to have the least amount of impact to the public as well as to the staff, and still maintain quality of service. The library board would have final approval of where those cuts would take place. What would be suggestions of cuts obviously depends on the actual cut, um, which I'm hoping there's not at all. But it could be less hours of service, we're looking at weekends, we're looking at evening hours, there would be less programming. Um, there would be reduction in collections, both online and in print collections. And when we have a reduced or diminished collection, it, it does not help us leverage with other libraries, um, their collections. Um, and so that, that's, that's a problem, and when you are reducing these types of things, you are most definitely looking at reducing the hours of staff, starting with part-time, non-union staff, and then moving towards the union staff. Um, a one percent cut is about twenty-one thousand, a three percent cut is in the sixty thousand dollar range, and a five percent cut is over, just over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and eight thousand dollars for this particular budget. Other sources of funding, um, there is a misconception that the, um, proposed library board budget that was approved during the March, uh, special library board meeting would somehow be offset by funding from other sources, either the Friends of the Weathersfield Library, donations, or the utilization of investment income. It is extremely important to note that these other sources are limited, often restricted, and intended to supplement and not supplant the library's general operating funds. And in addition, I have already accounted for their anticipated use in the library board's approved budget, I've already taken that into account. So when I started in twenty-fourteen, our library books and other media, uh, budget was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And I've been able to carefully reduce that down and utilize investment income to help supplement that, and then to keep in mind that at some point in time, there aren't really so many cars driving on the roads with CD players. Um, although our CD collection is actually more utilized than you would think. It also accounts that DVDs are shrinking. Um, but people still come in and utilize them because they can't pay for streaming service. So, in that case, you know, and, and, and that's very restricted, uh, the investment income, the Jane Showman account, um, is actually, over the year, is down eighteen thousand dollars. It's, um, we don't really drop below three hundred thousand, right now it's three oh six. At the beginning of the year, it's like at three twenty-five. I hope if we look at the June statement, I hope the markets rebound this spring would be fantastic. And I make a recommendation to the board of how much we'll withdraw to utilize those funds, but right now, if, if it goes below three hundred, the recommendation is not to withdraw, and that's in keeping with, um, you know, the what we have, what has been set up for the, the Jane Showman endowment account. So the markets are sometimes fantastic, and other times, they're not. Um, the Friends of the Library, um, they have, as of their March thirty-first, a financial report that I, my staff received last week, they had a, just over thirty-nine thousand dollars. And I'm about to put forth and ask to them that is nearly thirteen thousand dollars for summer reading alone. Um, they would like to actually spend the money on furnishings. And they, uh, informed us at the me, at their meeting last week that they received a five thousand dollar donation for furnishings for the children's department. But I need new flooring for the children's department before I'm gonna buy furniture, so they're restricted, and the Friends don't wanna pay for health insurance. I mean, they're very generous, they, they fund our museum passes, um, summer reading, uh, different types of programs, but I pull out of them already anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. i- in a pre-pandemic year. And I've already, I'm gonna be, I'll have tapped them by mid-May for sixteen thousand dollars. So I'm well on my way to already getting it, getting money from them. They have not been able to have a book sale in over two years. So in a book sale, they're only making five to eight thousand dollars. Other book sales make a lot more money than the Weathersfield Library book sale makes. So a- as far as I'm concerned, they're actually down twenty thousand dollars and what they should have had. The library, we received, I kind of spoke about this earlier. We received twenty thousand dollars of ARPA money from the state library grant. It's a wonderful gift, but again, that was extremely limited. I put in three grant applications of trying to help us move forward. And we did move forward in some ways, but I, I now will have two wonderful water fountains and a charging station and a lot of paper towels and some fantastic tables. But that's not going to cover operating expenses. And so, you know, that money's already been spent and accounted for. Already spoke about the investment is, is down. The library's revenue, our proposed revenue that I submitted to Mike O'Neill and Bonnie earlier in, I think it was January, early February. Our revenue estimate is five thousand dollars. And there is a movement underway to go fine free as public libraries. And this is a nationwide movement and Connecticut over half, that's ninety public libraries at this point, have gone completely fine free. And in the surrounding areas, Rocky Hill is fine free and Newington is fine free. And that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on us. Now, we're fortunate that, I believe that Laurel, the previous director, had been leading almost like the country in some way, where she did food for fines. And that will be a discussion the library board will need to have. And we do food for fines right now and we'll be doing that again in July. But surrounding towns are doing very different things. And that's the revenue that we contribute to the town. But in the month of July, we're waving, we've been waving during the pandemic mostly. We've just restarted in the past year with fines. But it does not help that Rocky Hill and Newington have gone completely fine free. Currently, why everybody would like a crystal ball of what the dollar amount would be with about two and a half months left of the fiscal year, the current fiscal year. It's still a little early, but as of today, and I know that Mike has it out somewhere in the book, in the, in the binder. As of today, we are, the library is seventy nine percent spent out. Next week it'll be eighty one percent because it's about two percent for every, most of the salaries, every pay period. And so next week is a pay week and that'll be, will be at eighty one percent, but that's on track. So our spending is already directly on track. And then if I can make a plug for capital projects, and so that's on page the screen that we can all look, and I know you have this in front of it, but for those who are on that don't have the binder. I did not see that we had anything under CNEF. So I'll focus on capital improvement. And while I am not project sixteen, I am project forty six and forty seven as ranked at the bottom there. The library redesign project, we were looking for a hundred thousand dollars to be put for, forward to that one point seven million that we just received. And then the library, the RFID replacement, so a refresh of that is, is, is about two hundred thousand dollars. And so that's the capital money. Obviously, this is not breathing apparatus like the fire department, we understand that. But, yeah, so that's, that's where we are in those projects. There are other projects in CNEF, I believe, and in CIP that benefit the library. They are not, they are however, under different departments, under Sally Katz, I believe. And so we are proponents of those as well. And I think Mike O'Neill or somebody is doing voiceover IP. So I'm a big proponent of voiceover IP. And, and that, that's very important, the library generator. But I know that the police need a new generator as well. So, you know, those other projects, we understand. Anything related to HVAC and roofing, I'm a big fan of. But that's what I have for the budget. And I'm just wondering if there's any questions that I did not already answer.
Thank you, Brooke. Just going back real quick, you first started off with the one point seven million dollar grant for the bond grant. If I remember correctly, it was one of the conversations, I think I was part of it. It might have been in the CIEC first meeting on that. And I think I, I recommended going to bond counsel for that, so.
Yes, yes, and thank you very much. And that is great, yes, so thank you. Yes, I do remember that and yes.
So that may have been the impetus for the bond commission, so just wanted to mention that. You would, yeah, you sat through the conversation with the fire department because we were running a little bit late. I mean, you heard what they're going through as well. I mean, water alone is up twenty five thousand. Diesel just for that department up four thousand. You mentioned, you know, the CNEF. Air packs, six hundred and eighteen, thermal imaging cameras, sixty eight thousand. Those are just the, the two that you heard from just the previous one. You know, there are priorities for each and every department. I mean, I, I guarantee if we had every department take a look at that CIEC ranking, they would want to be in the top ten as well. And it's, it's, as the deputy mayor said earlier, it's not that they're, you know, number one ranked. And there's a whole pool that we're in the top tier, second tier, third tier. Yeah, it's a question of, you know, where do we have the money for an additional four thousand dollars in their diesel MDC charging us additional twenty five thousand? And that's just in, in the last department that you, you guys sat through.
And I didn't catch all of that. I did come in late and I, I really can't speak to other departments. I really, I can just speak to the library specifically.
Yep. But it's across the board so far in the last four or five that we've heard from increases for the, these increases for those. And I know you and I have talked about it since you came on board. Staffing at the, the library, I mean, sixteen, well, take you out, there's fifteen either associates or library, librarians or managers. Are any of them looking to retire anytime soon?
We are anticipating retirements and, and there's going to be at least one retirement this year for sure. However, we are looking to fill those positions. So from all those positions that you see, even past the sixteen, that's a total of thirty humans for a total of like twenty point three two positions. F or FTE equivalent, full-time equivalents. So I have thirty humans. And when I started, we had fifty, over fifty humans. And so I have slowly brought that down. Our FTEs, when I started, it was twenty two point eight seven, I believe. And now we're at twenty point three two. I think I've pushed it about as far as I really can go and still maintain qualities, you know, the quality service. But I, I do anticipate retirements in the next couple of years. I do expect, there is going to be one this year for sure. But I am planning to fill that. Now, can I delay doing that a little bit? But not as much as you might think. And the cost savings on some of these, because I have to fund anybody leaving, the people retiring are generally not insuring an entire family at that point in their life. They may be funding us, having a spouse, but not children. But when I'm adding, when, when a person retiring, I have to ensure them at full family. And so that's plus, you know, fourteen to, fourteen to twenty one thousand dollars extra. You know, so there isn't necessarily the cost savings that you might see because it's on the health insurance on the, the one. They do, they, there is a cost savings because many of these people are rotating off the pension. And, but then that, that burden gets bore, gets, is, is weighs down another, another aspect in the budget with the town. And less and less people try to hold up the arc of the pension. And I don't want to speak out of turn because Mike O'Neill will correct me. But you know, that there's less people trying to hold up that. But the people are rotating onto the defined contribution, which is a savings. So.
When have we all, how, I guess, what are our hours right now for the library?
We have, I believe it's fifty four hours a week, over seven days a week. And this past year, because our budget, there really wasn't a budget increase. We had a budget decrease this current fiscal year. We actually did not do Sundays in September, but we started in October. And, and we were planning to do October through May. And I believe I have achieved enough savings in the current fiscal year to pull off Sundays in June. So we have scheduled Sundays for June. And I don't know, maybe the last Sunday of June, I have to pull the plug and go, we're closed and there's no more money. But we do anticipate being able to pull that off. So I was able to achieve some cost savings through the year to do Sunday service through June. And ideally, I would have enough to start up in September. And if not, I'll be looking at October, November to start up Sunday, seven day a week service.
And how, how long have we done seven days a week?
For as long as I've been here and I would say longer. And I'm looking at Martha, Martha, do you, it's been a long time.
Sundays was something that was an initiative of Laurel's. So it's been probably, it has been since before Brooke came in. And it was something we sought to include in our budget, probably for a couple of years before we were able to, to achieve that. Very popular time for folks to come into the library.
Okay.
And if I utilize, I, it's unique, if I, I am able to use part-time, non-union staff on Sundays. If I need to utilize union staff, which often I do, I have to pay them time and a half. And so, but I, I have a certain order that I go through, that we're, that we go through in order to get to that level. And so we've been able to keep it down where a, a union member may only do one Sunday a month. And some really want it, some don't. But it, it's costly if I'm utilizing the union, but I'm not required, but I would need to if I cannot find the part timers. And that's why it's important to keep the part-time, non-union wages up a little bit because I am competing with other surrounding libraries as well as like Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, it's, so I have to be, I have to be competitive enough that people want to have Sundays at the Weathersfield Library and work here as opposed to, you know, pick another location. So, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. But so far we've, we've been, I, I think we've been fortunate to hang on to our part-time, non-union. And they've been working for us for so long.
Okay, do you know, as you talked about surrounding libraries, do our surrounding towns, are they open on Sundays as well?
Um, I, you know, I think everybody kind of shut down during the pandemic and some locations have opened a bit, a lot do the winter months. And sometimes it does feel like we are the library that is open in, in surround, in the surrounding area. I believe Newington has to pay their staff double time. And so they probably have less Sunday service than us. And I can't speak to Rocky Hill off, I used to know it cold, I don't know it anymore because the pandemic has, has changed things. But there was significantly less Sunday service. And we've been able to, to add it back on.
Okay. And I'm just looking at some of the surrounding ones. What are our hours on Sunday?
It's one to five, the staff come in and report at twelve thirty, so it's one to five.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions for Brooke?
Mayor, if I may. Thank you, Mayor. Brooke, thank you for your presentation, very comprehensive. I was in the library today, was buzzing. I got, I don't know if you can see this book, Grit by Angela Duckworth. I thought it might help me get through the budget process. But in all seriousness, I wanted to ask you, Brooke, about, you've had a significant cut to library books and other media. I think it was like, I'm not looking at right now, like a hundred and thirty four thousand a few years ago, down to a hundred. We all know that books are part of the lifeblood of the library. Was that just to, in an attempt to save money? Did you change the way you ordered books? I mean, I want to get at some of the needs maybe that haven't been funded as much in the last few years.
So we, we, one of, well, the investment, the Jane Showman endowment, where the proceeds of the sale of the house, of her house, went to the library. It was to be util, it's to be utilized only for the purchase of adult material. I cannot use it to purchase children's books. However, the book in, what people are reading and how they're absorbing information has changed. So even though I have cut it from one thirty four to one hundred, it's been very deliberate. It has been progressive. I, I, we're kind of at the limit now, but I'm able, able to make up for any of it with adult material, specifically with the Jane Showman money. But Jane Showman money, I, the, the March thirty first statement says I'm down eighteen thousand dollars in them from what I had year to date. And so there's less to pull, recommend to the board to pull out to utilize. So in previous years, I've pulled out, say, fifteen thousand or, does that sound about right? When I'm looking at Martha and Hannah, I'm like, yeah, fifteen thousand. And we can use it on adult-oriented electronic databases as well. And so, but as far as we, we're, we're keeping track of trends that people utilize nonfiction information differently. People look up reference quickly on their phone. They don't necessarily want to read the whole biography of somebody. So we've been adjusting our spending accordingly. And so it's been a good experience for us because we're methodically been doing this with the, I've been methodically doing this with the staff over a period of years that we don't need to spend when, like nine thousand on DVDs. We don't have the CERC, they're not producing, they're not delivering. And people are streaming more, but we still are purchasing some DVDs, but we've adjusted our spending accordingly. Same with CDs, same with like what we would refer to as books on tape, but there's CDs on tape. You can't buy a new car, well, you can't buy a new car, it's like, but if you were to get a new car, you can't get a DVD, I mean, a CD player anymore. So to recognize that magazines have magically shrunk themselves down themselves. I've made almost no cuts to magazines, they go out of print like you wouldn't believe and I get refunds. So, you know, instead of, when I started, it was in the ten thousand dollar range, we're in the six thousand dollar range now. And, and you know, and so we, we adjust that. So that's kind of what's been going on. So I don't feel that our collection has suffered and we have reduced the book budget by thirty four thousand dollars. And I have the Jane Showman to help with some of that. But, but that's not necessarily a guaranteed stream of income, but I don't feel our collection has suffered for it.
Understood. Understood. Helpful. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, if, if you may, are you done Ken?
Yes, thank you.
My comments are going to be a little different and so I'll apologize upfront. First, Brooke, thank you for your presentation. Um, as someone who has always been supporter of the library and someone who grew up in the West Hartford Library, similar to Martha Kinnear. Someone who probably based on my reading at the West Hartford Library, got into the same school Martha Kinnear went to called Fairfield. Um. I have to be honest with you, this department to me has become so politicized. That it is so disheartening when I see the posts that have been shared by the Democratic Town Chair. Spreading, the Republicans want to take money from the library. And I'll tell you why I find that offensive. No one has once asked me or a single Republican on this council, do you support the library? It's no different than the nonsense that went on with the closing of Willard Pool. There is not a single Republican on this council that supported that. And yet the pitch out there was, hey, let's make political theater out of this. Let's drum up support. And make the Republicans look bad. And when you start to politicize a department that doesn't check whether a Republican or a Democrat, when you come in to check out a book. What happens is it calls into question anything being asked. Because the first thing that came to my mind, are they asking this because they need it? Or are they asking this because they want to make political theater to challenge the Republicans to cut it? So they can say the Republicans don't care about the library. And I find that incredibly offensive because my voting record. In twenty years ago, I have always been supportive. Of the library. As a kid who grew up in the library, I find incredible value in. And to be lumped in and said that I'm no longer support, the Republicans don't support it, to me is disingenuous. And it has completely politicized this department. And so that's the stain that's out there and I just don't understand why it even had to happen.
So I can just say that I actually am not on Weathersfield social media. I believe we are among the most neutral departments. I've actually, ten of my staff are Weathersfield residents. And I've specifically had discussions with them. Um, they're concerned that, you know, that if patrons engage them and talk of, they're, they're concerned. I have asked them to not, you know, that, not to, 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 they can't speak as municipal employees. That's my job to speak. Um, I am not on Weathersfield social media. Um, I pride myself on that I'm very, very neutral and that the department is very, very neutral. I try to purchase materials or have my staff purchase materials. That is upsetting to everyone in the community that we are very, very balanced. Um, I think I am known nationally as one of the more conservative, um, library directors. Um, uh, and then so I, I, I think that is shocking to some people. I believe, I mean, if you've seen me at Corn Fest. Um, and the politics and everybody's getting elected, people want to come over. Um, I have only known bipartisan support. Being part of Weathersfield since I've been here since two thousand and fourteen. I have had a nine oh vote on my budget. Um, and I, and, and so I can just speak to my experience and my staffs. Um, the library board is appointed by council. Um, and they are the ones who are supposed to advocate. I have to be careful in my role as a municipal employee and I used to work in a nonprofit and all I did was budget advocacy. Um, and so I'm sorry that it's, it, it, it's, it. That it's. Be, that your perception is that is politicized, I, you know, and that's your perception and that's. Um, I, I don't, I just, I just don't want to be cut. That, that's, and that's my job is to advocate for the department. Um, and it, it was kind of like really, um, shocking to me. Um, but, and, and, and I know Bonnie is a, and, and her family are heavy library users. Um, and so, you know, it, that's, that's what I can say about that.
And, and, and Brooke, I appreciate that and I don't doubt that you're that way at all. And my comments aren't really being directed at you. My comments are in reference to, I saw this and it's not a perception, it's a fact. All you got to do is go on Facebook and you can see. With the post that are being sent from the Democratic Town Committee. That, you know, the Republicans want to cut the budget. The Republicans want to do that. It's not true. It's disingenuous and it's not true. Nobody has asked me how I feel about this. So I'm not going to allow myself, nobody's asked any other Republican how they feel about this. And so when you start to play that game, it starts to make everybody question everything. When in fact, you know, if you look at the town manager's proposed budget. It doesn't say the Republican proposed budget. It doesn't say the Democrat. It doesn't even say the council proposed budget. Our job is to listen to what you guys are advocating for and come together in a bipartisan fashion. And I'm just telling you, when I read stuff like that and I see stuff like that and I have people calling saying, why do you want to cut something? Without any knowledge whatsoever of it. You know, that to me does not bode for bipartisanship. It says, oh, we're going to play games here with the budget at the library. And I'll go back to what I said in the beginning. I don't get asked if I'm a Republican, a Democrat, or an independent, or libertarian, or anything when I go to check out a book. And so to me is, I don't feel that's the way to run. Library board.
And I would say that our board did pass, um, a unanimous bipartisan. Um, budget. Um, and I'll, and I'll end it there.
Okay, and so Brooke, then my other question is, and I'm sorry I had to say that, but it was something that was very personal and frustrating. Is because I have no problem saying no to something, but don't assume that because I have an R next to my name, it's going to be a no. My question to you though is, in your report, in your budget breakdown. It looked like there were four managers for twelve employees, which means each manager. If you do the math, and I don't know if it's fair math, has three employees each. Is that correct?
No, there, I have three managers. Um, and, and I have an admin team of four, but three are managers. And then we have, like, I have a manager for children's services and she oversees, I want to say about five. Five or six people and I would say there's probably seven or eight in a different department. And then the other one is about like six positions. And so there's thirty humans. Um, and I'm one of them, but they're, they're managing more than just like a handful of people, but some of the people are just. We have more humans than it might seem. It's thirty people total. Yeah, so, but they're managing more than a couple of people for sure.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could hop in?
Sure.
Um. On the, there's been, there was some discussion about circulation and, and these types of. Uh, the, the kind of like the use case, you might say for the library. I get a lot of mine. I use like the Libby app, you know, and, and download a lot of stuff in, in that vein. And of course I think there's a transition as you talked about from CDs, you know, older technology, newer technology. Can you, when I was looking at some of those numbers where you were explaining them, can you help me understand is, is that, was those numbers of use, is that? What we might consider the old fashioned way, you know, the pulling out of the books is Ken just, you know, the grit book that he just talked about? Or is that inclusive of? The different modalities of use of the library?
It include, like a checkout, when you download on Libby, that's the same as if you had checked it out. A, a, a paper version or an audiobook version. Um, if that makes sense, yes.
It does. And it's helpful because I didn't know the technic, the, the basis of the statistics you were giving us or.
The, the problem becomes Matt is that I don't necessarily own. Sometimes I own, sometimes I don't own. Um, in the capital sense. That Libby copy. Um, and that's, that's kind of frustrating because sometimes after twenty-six uses or twenty-six weeks or whatever it is, it goes back.
Good evening.
It good, it, it goes back to, um, Libby. And I would have to repurchase it. And so there's a bunch of different models that go on that are very, very frustrating. And I never want to give too much money to any one of these hoopla or overdrive. Because it, it just kind of goes into, you know, users and we do have, you know. Hundreds of, of users of this stuff, but, um, I have to keep in mind, I don't own that. Um, and so we're constantly working with the vendors and our consortiums to negotiate the best prices for this. Because if eBooks existed and, you know, when public libraries came about and. Um, we would not have public libraries. Like, they're all about not sharing. You know.
So, um. When we look at the dollar amounts that you're asking for, like there's a hundred thousand dollars of material and I think there's a couple of other pieces. Is, is all of that electronic material sort of lumped into that ask or is that separated out in a different way?
The tech support is. Tech support is often the e-resources and the eBooks. But some of the eBooks does fall into. Um, that other line of a hundred thousand dollars. Where library books and other media, so. Did that, the library books and other media is generally, you're more traditional. And the tech support line is, is generally the other. Sometimes there's some overlap, but.
Okay. A, a, as a, if there's a way the library prefers it, I'm sure you're dealing with multiple vendors, the rest of it. It might be useful just as a side note to let. The patrons know, or at least I didn't, I don't know. You know, I use the Libby. It's an e, it's an easier, uh. I, I'm familiar with it, but if you prefer, it's cheaper for the library for me to use an audiobook or eBook or another, another vendor. That would be good, that would be good feedback for a patron. That's all I'm just throwing out there. Um, as it relates to, um, line forty-six, forty-seven, the two one hundred thousand dollar requests. On the CIP, is that, have you done any analysis or is there analysis that's done to determine whether or not that's an ARPA? Has the possibility of an ARPA funding? Grant over like we've seen in other departments, this is.
Yeah, so I believe RFID was the RFID replacement, I believe was, is technically eligible. For, for that. Um, but there was a lot of different eligibility requirements and, um. The model that the vendor is currently throwing at me is a lease and you may not want to do lease with ARPA money. Um.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, and the library redesign project, do we think that would fall under it?
Um, I, that I do not, I don't believe I submitted that as a project for ARPA. That's been on the CIP. I, 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 I did, I submitted RFID. Um, after hearing of the.
Requirements?
Yeah.
So your, your thought is that the redesign project, like, I guess it's. I think it's, is a part of a match to the one point seven.
It would be getting us up to the not, one point nine eight nine.
Yep, and you don't think that that probably would maybe meet the requirements of ARPA? Is that your?
I'd have to revisit it, but the project I submitted for ARPA was RFID.
I think we, we treated that, uh. Library redesign project as ARPA money.
Oh, you did?
It's on here, not item forty-six for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't know, that's on the CIP.
Yeah, but.
About the ARPA. I guess it's, okay.
And Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, the CIP items were, uh, uh, available for ARPA funds. Isn't that correct?
Yes, as, you know, as long as they're one-time expenses, yeah.
If, um, if, if clarification is needed, if you could just let me know whether those two items might fall into that, that would be great. We don't need to debate it, figure it out today. Thank you.
Mary.
Yep.
You're my.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Brooke. I just wanted to ask about your daily capacity. I believe that you prior said before COVID, your numbers are about maybe five hundred a day or so.
About four hundred.
Like, uh, I just want to know, do you see a lot of overlay? About them like out of town, uh, residents that maybe don't have the same access in their town that come in and, and want to get used or try to have memberships or whatnot. Um, like, I just want to see like how we're regionalized and how we're supporting other regions with what we're doing in our ops.
So we, um. We receive, uh, well, I would say we look at this. With the library use, so it's not counting the people. They'd have to utilize their card for us to really track that because. As Dan was saying, we don't ask very much about patrons who come in. We all like anon anonymity or confidentiality, right? So like, we don't ask that question. We are able to tell it with card use. So that would be when they hit the computers, the wifi. Or the checking out a book. And so, um, I would say in any given year, at least twenty percent of our users are non-Weathersfield residents. That would include myself. Um, and we, we do, uh, get money if I use my Milford card. Here. And check materials out here. Um, and that's seen as a net gain and a benefit, but you have to remember we have a great parking lot. We're on bus lines. Um, and, uh, we are open generally seven days a week into the late, until nine o'clock at night. Um, and so that we are able. Um, where people do come in and utilize us and a lot of people are employed in the town and come and use us because they work here. And so they are part of the Weathersfield community, just in a different way where they may not be an actual resident, but they have to use. Like I have to use my Milford card, um, here. If I'm going to check out something from here. Um, I don't get a Weathersfield card. Um. And so I would say about twenty percent, that has shrunk. Because of the pandemic where people just aren't going out.
Then my family uses a lot of the programs there, especially my boys. Um, what, do you, do you have like a account on like the average amount of programs that you have available for families that you do throughout the year?
I can get.
I know that's kind of prob, arts.
I can get that easily. Yeah, I, I, I think the last fiscal year that we reported, two thousand and twenty-one, I think I, the slide said a hundred and seventy. It was just under a hundred and eighty.
Okay.
I, I might have it to, yeah, a hundred and eighty, yeah. And I'll, I can get you that exact fis, fiscal year. Um, we have just opened, reopened up in-person programming for, uh, starting in January. Um, we're still doing virtual, we're cutting back a little bit on the take and makes. Um, or the self-directed kind of activities. Um, but we're trying to have more and more robust, robust programming. Um, yeah, so.
And I just want to, um, finish off by saying, not to create a back and forth, but to my, my best friend over there, Dan. Um, I'm sorry you feel that way, honestly. Um, from my understanding, I believe the message is more so to get residents to step up and step on their support for your budget. Um, I'm sorry if there was any attacks toward you or your team, but I don't think that was the initiative or the goal. And you know, I'm going to speak to you honest, so if you want to rough up in the backyard, I'm right here, buddy.
Are we allowed to talk, the board members?
Sure.
Up to the mayor and Bonnie.
I just wanted to say, I've been on the library board, this is my second time around. Um, and Brooke is a real asset to this town. I'm one of the Republican appointees to the committee. And the amount of time and energy she spends on the budget, um, has convinced me that I never ever want to be a librarian. Um, she, she is absolutely nickel and dime, down to the penny. She knows how many paper towels we have saved. Um, she is the most fiscally responsible person I have ever met in my life. And when it comes to saving money for the library, she really bends over backwards. So it's one of the things that is a benefit. I, all other politics aside, the budget. That this, this individual creates for our library and the way she manages it to maximize every penny that she spends. Should be rewarded. I've been in conversations with her, where other people have suggested, don't you want to pad it in case they cut it? And she says, no. Um, I've never been on any other committee like that, but she will not pad the budget. So there is room to cut it out. So if we do slash the budget that's requested, that we have requested. And then a bipartisan group has voted on and approved, it will directly impact services and it'll really, it'll come out of our skin.
And Lori, I totally agree. Brooke and I have had conversations offline about what she's done for the library. Brooke and I have had conversations off line about what she's done for the library. You know, I've commended her, so much so that not the last town man, not the current town manager, not the last town manager, but the town manager before that. Scolded me publicly for the comment comments that I made, uh, supporting the library. At one of our budget meetings, so, um, it goes without saying, I I do agree with you, and I know what the hard work. Not only Brooke has done, but the library boards of today and yesterday have done as well. So it's not a lost point on me, and I don't think on anybody on this Zoom tonight. Any other questions? As you can see, not only Brooke, but the board, you know, we've got our work cut out for us, you sat through the entire. Hearing last night, you know what we are faced with, we have a book of, I don't even know how many pages of how many departments. Of how many requests, and it's like trying to fit a. Square peg in a round hole, or squeeze a balloon and try not to take too much from one end of it. And fill up another end of it, you know, money. Has to flow, and we got to figure out amongst the nine of us, you know, how are we going to prioritize these requests? Because, you know, just like I started off my conversation with you guys. You know, it, if we don't take from one or we don't add to another, somebody's going to, you know, have their feathers ruffled. And. Everybody has a priority in this town, and we're we're faced with having to. To measure those priorities against each other, and it's a very difficult task.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and thank you for allowing our board to attend as well.
Mayor, could you just? Um, I guess Dan's got me going now, I just need to say something, and I, and I'm going back into retirement, but. No one tells me what to do with my proposed budget, so there's stuff going on, social media. And I don't read it either. That is saying that the Republicans have made these decisions, two weeks ago, the mayor emails me, now I get it. And says, who told you to close Willard Pool? No one told me to close Willard Pool, nobody told me to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of a library, this is an extremely hard budget. And so if you guys are playing, I'm not just saying you, but if anybody is playing games with either party. The person to blame is me. It's my budget, and if anybody knows Bonnie well, you do not tell her what to do. As a town manager, we do not get in the middle of it, and I just have to say this, because I am appalled as much as Dan. That another party is being blamed for something that's my decision. So thank you, Mayor, I'm just so upset. There's no need for these games to be played in a manager form of government. All right, I'm done, I'm off my.
Are you counting down the days? I mean, I I gotta add a couple, but. I appreciate that, Bonnie. Okay, without any other questions, I think we're gonna move over to IT, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We got Jim, John, and our finance director slash IT person, Mike O'Neil.
I'm gonna let Mayor, I'll let, uh, we've got John Eichner, Jim DeRagan, and Derek Sola, I'll let Derek Sola, uh, kick it off and take you through.
I'm sorry, I didn't see Derek, he might be on another screen. Oh, there you are.
Yep.
Command center.
Yep, go ahead, guys.
I feel like the band that had to perform after the Rolling Stones after that. So. Our overall bu- budget's pretty similar to last year, there's a few differences, um, so I'm just gonna go over those highlighted, um, differences. So travel, training and dues, um, that increased, um, so with that. We're just like any organization, we we want to try to retain our employees, so we want to invest in them, so we want them to to attend conferences. Um, go to different training, so they have the skills and the confidence to, you know, help all our users. Um, and training overall, we have to stay up to date because everything in IT is always constantly training. So that's why there's a slight increase, um, because all the vendors, all their packages seem to be increasing over the years. So any questions about travel, training and dues?
You know, and again, I just want to expand upon that a little bit, uh, with with a cybersecurity lens now, ransomware attacks. Um, you know, our team must be well-trained in this direction also. Uh, to make sure that we can mitigate any attacks that come our way, it's, it is, it is the new foundation now that we must build build upon here. It, uh, net network security is is paramount now, so some of that training is cybersecurity training also.
All right, um, one of the next items that went up was support services. So the big ticket with this one was we implemented a, um, help desk ticket system. So with this, it's a cloud-based system, it's gonna help us track, um, requests for service, so we can track things like break-fix. New computer requests, um, training, setting up of, um, meetings, whatever the users need. Before, we were flooded with emails and things got missed, not by, you know, on purpose, but it was just a flood of emails every time somebody needed something. This keeps a nice organized method where we can triage, we can track trends, the users can actually go check their own tickets. They don't have to constantly contact us, they can see that we're waiting for parts, we're waiting for purchase orders. Um, and we can track trends, so we can find devices that are defective or products that aren't working properly. And we know for the future, we may not buy a certain laptop because we had a flood of tickets, because, you know, this laptop had issues. And that's a new service, so we we got a good deal because we're only using it for a few months before the budget season. And a full season is gonna be four thousand, so that's why there was an increase in support services. Um, there were some minor increases in internet services. And most of these are just contractual maintenance agreements with vendors, so their costs go up, um, and it's reflected in our renewals. And then one item that actually went down was. Our IT equipment and software, uh, because two items, desktops and Windows ten upgrades. Were moved to CNEF. So those are the major highlighted items to kind of have a difference, if anybody had questions on those.
I'd like to just jump back to personnel, if everyone, and I'm looking at page twelve at the top where the salaries are, and just to explain. Uh, the staffing here. There was an upgrade, um, an approved upgrade in our tech one position to an information specialist two. The tech one position was the one that we created, um, after Paul Dudley retired seven years ago. That was funded at forty-three thousand dollars, we had a tough time keeping that filled, finding people and keeping people, we've had three people in that position. Anyways, that was, um, there was a discussion a couple of months ago, and it was agreed upon to upgrade that to a tech two position. We filled, uh, that position and another tech two position, um, that was vacant, if you'll recall. Besides Jim, who's with the Board of Ed, but helps us quite a bit on the town side. Um, of the positions, you know, Derek was the only person back last year for for quite a while, and that included. The loss of the officer at the police department who was covering IT. So we're back to full strength, um, which is has made a world of difference, we appreciate the support for the upgrade of that position. Um, there is one additional request, which would be a reclass of Derek from a tech two to a tech three. Uh, Derek is is leading the staff, and, uh, he deserves that. Bonnie has prioritized that at the top of her list on page five. Uh, the the cost of that reclass presently is is about seventeen hundred dollars. Uh, but that gets, that gets Derek up into a different grade, um, at the at the first step, so it gives him not only an increase in grade. But, uh, the opportunity to get steps, um, in the coming years. And that that comprises the bulk, that and benefits, you know, which are just the the fifteen percent and on, uh, medical maze mainly. Are really the 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 bulk of the increase, if you look at the bottom, you know, on page thirteen. Personnel went up by sixteen percent because of the the two things I just mentioned, non-personnel costs actually went down.
Are you guys comfortable with three people in that department? And I guess, where does Felix and those that are helping out with some of the IT work? Where do they fall under, or is I, or is Felix the number three position?
Derek would probably tell you, he could use another ten people right there.
Oh, yeah, the the more the better, uh, Felix is the number one position. And our newest employee, Theo, is number three.
Okay.
I mean, these guys are straight out, and I do mean straight out, and for the longest time, even before I got here, Derek was the only one there. But, um, I mean, I'm sure you can imagine all the IT needs that are going on, and and we're not even, uh. We we don't even have as much IT stuff as other towns do, so.
Yeah, and it and it's only gonna increase over time, so.
Oh, yeah. You know, one thing I wanted to mention, which is not in the budget, but I I actually, I had a callback finally from a company. Um, Derek and Felix, and I've taken it over since I got here, we are bombarded with FOI requests. And it was taking Derek and Felix hours upon hours upon hours, till finally. I said, we're taking it into the manager's office, and it's taking us hours, so I am researching software because there are companies. That will actually do this for you, um, but, you know, it just, I don't see it stopping for a while because of a lot of these lawsuits. So I think we need, we're gonna need to get a grip on that, because you certainly don't want your new manager spending so much time on FOIs. Um, so I'll be hopefully reporting back to you with some costs of that, too, so I just wanted to mention that.
Uh, I have a question for Mike, if I can. Um, Mike, how how much of your, your day or your time do you get involved with the IT?
Less and less, Tom, you know, I I. I'm kind of, I I've been a conduit to management, to the manager, um, over the years since we made the change. Uh, an asset to the team in terms of, uh, funding and budgeting and and figuring out, you know, helping. Assisting with decisions on on how to pay for things, assisting with decisions on what, you know, what to buy, pricing, that sort of thing. Less and less is is to answer your question, Tom, because of the, we're, you know, our staffing is back up, you know, two, two years ago. Going into the pandemic, it was, I think it was just. Well, we had the, we had the the lower position filled for a little while into the summer, Tricia was here. But it was just in-town hall, you know, it was Derek and I and Gary that were, you know, figuring out how to do meetings. You know, remote and get to get people remote and and, you know, Board of Ed helped us, Jim and 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 the staff over at the Board of Ed were helping us too. But my. My time has has decreased, as you would expect, you know, I I, um. I kind of stick to, you know, just, I was doing a little more hands-on type stuff a couple of years ago, but now it's more just, you know, managerial support, if you will.
Do you envision a manager position eventually for this department?
Yeah, that's how, that's how it's, you know, and it's been, you know, Jim and and Derek are, have always truly managed it. You know, from a technical standpoint, um, and again, I think they're either of those guys, you know, you've you've seen them, you know them both, and you've seen them in in. Meetings from time to time, so they can, they can do, um. What I've been doing.
I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, there's not too much on your plate, you have. You have your own thing to be taking.
Yeah, I mean, we'll talk about, I can, I, you know, we'll talk about finance Thursday night, um, but I, it's. The IT, you know, if you, again, if you asked me this question a year and a half ago, I'd give you a different answer, but it's, we're we're in good shape, you know, we've come a long way, boy. And credit to to the staff, I mean, we have come a long way.
We most certainly have, yes.
Thanks.
Um, so John's here to to just give everyone an update on the phone system and where we are. Um, and then, so John, if you want to do that, and then I'll just have let Derek take you to page eighty. Um, to talk about the the few CNEF items that are that are on that list.
I just want to remind folks, we do have Sally from Physical Services up next, and then Bonnie. I think we allotted.
Claudia, Claudia, too.
Claudia, so. Um, yeah, just be mindful of time when we go through these, I I don't want to shortchange anybody. But, uh, we do, we got a still a a full, at least another hour to go.
Yeah, the, the CNEF is just, um, the desktops, Windows ten upgrades, it was removed from the operating budget. And that's just really self-explanatory, it's just a constant refresh of computers, um, every single year. Purpose-built machines, so there's some licensing that we purchase, but, uh, it's pretty cut and dry, just desktop replacements.
As far as the VoIP sys- system is concerned, about four weeks ago, we received responses to the RFP we put out. We got ten responses in, we've been meeting once or twice, once or twice a week over the last four weeks. To review those, and we think we've pretty much narrowed it down to five finalists. We're gonna ask those five finalists to come in and make about a one-hour presentation of their system. Um, basically to answer some uncertain points that we had question marks on the proposals. Um, and. Uh, in large part to find out from them, which we didn't ask in the RFP proper, what their supply chain. Delays might be, when we, you know, if we make an award within the next thirty days, let's say, when can they get this thing done? One thing I can tell you was, uh, you, you know, I was, before you were talking about a radio system upgrade. The Harris folks are telling me that the Cisco components that they would require. You you said, if you gave me a a purchase order tomorrow, you won't see a a radio system upgrade to for eight to fourteen months. Because Cisco alone has an eight-month delay in their fulfillment process, so. I'm guessing we might see some of that, I hope it's not as bad as eight months, uh, when we, when we ask that question of the VoIP providers. But we'll be bringing them in in the next week, uh, for the final reviews and hopefully. Make a selection. Right after that.
John, would they be all coming in right around three hundred and fifty thousand for the VoIP?
They vary, some of them are are lower than that, uh, some of them, I can't remember if any are higher than that. But, um, no, I don't think anybody's higher than that, but tha- that's part of the questions. Hey, how can you do this at this price when one of the other proponents are saying? You know, twice the amount, that, you know, that that's among the confusion. Um, that we want to get clarified, to make sure that the lower offer is giving us what we want, quite frankly.
And then, a question for Mike, dude, did we put any money aside over the years for the VoIP? Is there a reserve for that at all?
Yes, yeah, we put, uh, you, the council, uh, transferred a hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, of of leftover money from last year's budget. So that goes, that goes against the, you know, the fifty that you see there, so we got to start on that.
Good, okay. I personally would like the VoIP off of this list. It's been on. The entire time I've been on council, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, let me tell you, when, when Rayanne hired me ten years ago, plus, I had three projects. A fiber backbone, radio system upgrade, and VoIP. I expected it to be done in no more than five years, so I'd like it to be done too.
Yeah, and just a quick background on that. We spent the past five years rebuilding the network on the town side. To an enterprise class net, network for built-in security, cybersecurity, wireless, internet. All of it. So you, you know, we have been building up and we could not, our network in the past could not support a VoIP system. I mean, we were purpose-building our net, network networks here in the past many years. Uh, for this end goal of VoIP. So it's taken time.
Okay. Any questions for John, Jim, Derek, or Mike? Seems pretty cut and dry.
All right, Physical Services is page fifty-two. Sally, you are up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Good evening. Actually, if you change to page fifty-four. I'd like to start there. If you look at the, sorry.
No, I just said, sorry.
Okay. If you look at the proposed budget for this year on page fifty-four, you'll see that our non-personnel. Requested costs have gone up by two percent. For this budget, that's a, that change is approximately around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The drivers to what made the increases in the budget. In the non-personnel items are things like the new MSW recycling, the new contract. What is, is more costly. The one and a half percent yearly increase for pains, which we are under a contract with them. Our unleaded fuel runs on a calendar, a, a regular calendar year. So half the year we have an actual fixed cost and half the year we have to put in an estimate. And, and Mike O'Neill works with, with the estimate based on previous years. Our diesel fuel went up twenty thousand dollars this year. Uh, and again, that was competitively bid through CROG. Larvicide was up and salt was up. Our utilities, natural gas pricing is up. Some of the offsets to those increases. Uh, some of the decreases, like some of our electricity costs are down. Due to the new contract and changing to LED light fixtures in many of the larger, in the larger buildings. And we're continuing to try to do LED fixture changeouts. We completed the library and we're working on PD. Bringing down costs for contractors. We've already, uh, working with Bonnie, the proposed cut is for. Removing the summer help in the schools, which is going to be a test to the custodians. We've taken away assistance with the LEAF program and also delaying a mechanic. And so, and originally when we put it, put this in, one of the decreases was the pool. So knowing that our increases to the non-personnel are really, the majority of these things are contracts or supply. Items such as, you know, salt and things. We tried to do some offsets, but we are still. We are still slightly up at, at, at a two percent increase. Trying not to bog people down with the, the line-by-line. That's kind of the, the global picture.
They already know that, Sally.
Yep.
I told them upfront.
Okay. Um. As far as the, if you look at the CNEF and ARPA lists. Our CNDF requests actually are a little different than what you see on the chart. You see four, three fifty, it says number one and number two, both at a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's incorrect. The hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is a combination of the two vehicles. It's not each one being that amount. And those, again, most of these are on the replacement schedules. The Jeeps with plows. We have two Jeeps that we have rebuilt on a number of occasions. Those Jeeps are used to. Throughout town in the smaller areas and also in sidewalks. The Jeep also is one of the trucks, well, used to. To take the trailer to, to do trash removal. You see three dump trucks with plows where we did not come just this year and ask for three trucks. That actually shows the last three years that we had requested a dump truck, but that it hadn't been purchased. So our initial request was for one, the Ventrack mower. Is a multiple-use device. Mostly it is a safer device for us to be able to use as a mower. When the Putnam product, Putnam exit project, Putnam Bridge project, excuse me, it will be completed. And also, uh, the installation of new sidewalks will be, be able to be used there. The zero-turn mowers and the transit van. Again, the transit van is for the BORIT. The tradespeople who work for, in the schools. When we took over the schools, we also took their vans. Their vans had, are basically rotting out. And so we wanted to try to get onto a replacement schedule for the trades vans. For that. There's also on the CRP, excuse me, CNEF list. ARPA requested town council for refuse cans at multiple locations. There has been a request over the past couple of years. From especially the business owners to add trash cans onto Main Street. And those ten thousand dollars seems a lot. It is, they are expensive to buy. They are heavy metal cans and to ship them from where they are purchased is exceptionally expensive. On the CIP ARPA list. And thankfully, and I do appreciate the fact that the council has already. Approved the replacement of the Charles Wright portable roof. We are going to be completing that project this summer, the renovation of that, of the portables. The roof maintenance. High Crest School, obviously, these are all things that you've heard of before. I don't want to go line by line through them. You, you're all well-versed in those. At this point, I don't know if you want to go for questions or if you want me to move on, Bonnie, to the other parts.
Probably questions.
Okay.
Right now.
Ryan? I think, Mayor, um, I have a question. So we, we hear a lot about. Vehicles that we have that are, are rusting out and, and rust is taking over them. Like, do we not have a preventative maintenance program? Like, what are, are we not like maintaining these vehicles and just allowing them to just sit in? And, you know, it, it's just like, that's always the, the conversation that we need to replace them because they're rusted out.
Well, part of it is that whenever our trucks are out, especially during winter operations, our trucks are out. We use straight salt. We do not use any other type of an organic DIC material. So our trucks are on the road for hours at a time. They are getting inundated from the bottom up from salt. Once the trucks, once the, the workers come in from, at the end of a storm. Our trucks are washed and cleaned. We have basically a wash bay. It is not a commercial washing, truck washing system. It's the best that we were able to put together down at Physical Services. But we are able to get in and, and wash the trucks. It's just that over time. The, the salt really does wear away at the trucks. The trucks are also used in non-winter months. They're hauling materials. They're going up, you know, into the. I'm blanking on the words. It's not, not a transportation, our stockpile, which has, you know, dirt roads and rudded roads. And so they are being used in that fashion. And so they do go through, you know, mud and dirt and stones and salt. But we do have a prevent, I mean, they do come in, they are regularly washed, they are regularly greased. They are regularly maintained as you, probably better than our guys do their regular vehicles. It's just that over time, the corrosiveness of salt is extreme. And when the salt mixes with the water from snow and starts shooting up into the truck. And it's out there for seventeen hours, eighteen hours, compile it over time. It, it, it rusts.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, just touch on the preventive maintenance aspect. I would appreciate you for providing that information.
Sally, I got a question for you with. Right now, our overtime is over by thirty-seven percent. We had budgeted two hundred and seventy-three thousand, we're at three seventy-five. What's the, uh, what's the driver of that additional hundred thousand dollars plus?
A lot of it was weekend and holiday storms. If you look back on it, I'm sorry, Bonnie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just gonna laugh. I said, they prayed and they won this year. Every damn time the weather came in, I went, oh, here goes the weekend.
Yep, it came in, Saturday, Saturday is time and a half, Sunday is double time. It snowed Christmas weekend. Um, we had icing conditions, you know, New Year's, around New Year's. It's just, we really lost this one when it came to, it was great for the schools. They had school. Because it didn't snow during the week, except for a couple of times, but the weekends were really rough on us. We also had a lot of overnight ice glazing incidents where we were called in by the, by PD. That if the slippery conditions started earlier, and so we had to bring people in. And start salting especially the main intersections.
And then another one is roadway maintenance supplies. We budgeted one forty-three, we're at two hundred thousand now.
Roadway maintenance supplies are, is, a lot of that is, goes to TILCON for material for potholes. And also for repairing and replacing basins. A lot of our catch basins are shot today. I was just talking to Rich Bailey. The street sweeper, one of them, you know, he went over and it cracked. I mean, they're, they're, so that's where we're, we're over on that.
Okay.
Potholes this year are going to kill us. The roads have just opened up.
Yeah, somebody spoke about it last night and it's no secret to anybody on this call who. Drives around town. We try our best with Derek in the software to pinpoint the needs. But, you know, things definitely do. Deteriorate a lot quicker. I think, you know, it's just years of neglect. Like, I heard one, somebody twenty, thirty years ago neglected to, he just didn't invest in. Roads and it's starting to creep up on us over the last couple of years. Mike? Tom?
Sally, on page fifty-four. What other structures and improvements? There's a placeholder for a negative fifty-nine thousand.
That was the Willard, that was closing the Willard Pool.
Yeah, thank you.
Ryan, I saw your hand up, if you're still on. We'll get back to Ryan. Anybody else with any questions?
Sally, you want to go over your JACs real quick?
Yes, very quickly. I have two requests for JACs. These are really for two people who have gone for years above and beyond what their job descriptions have them do. One of them is David Hourhan, who was originally hired as a maintainer three HVAC person. HVAC and plumber. David is our senior person. He knows the incredible labyrinth of mechanical systems in all of our town buildings. And a few years ago, when Physical Services took over the operations of the Millwoods and Willard Pools. David took on that role of becoming the night's weekend's aquatic pool supervisor. He went to school, got an additional certifications and licensing in, in pool and spa operations. He currently now supervises two seasonal pool workers. In addition to when we need him during the summer, doing his HVAC work. He is, this position has really given him, or really has expanded well beyond. What he was originally hired to do. And now that we've added on the supervision part, the pool part. He is just, he's constantly available and responding. And is responsible also for all of the sourcing of the pool materials. He also is working on the long-range planning. For how to support, you know, all of the pumps and all the piping and everything else that goes into the pool operations. We were just talking this morning also, you know, of, of painting the pools and grinding them and everything else. And it is really, he's well, for years, we have added responsibilities onto his position. And he's done it and he's, and he's done it exceptionally well. And it is a position that when, when he leaves, we're going to need someone with pool expertise. And it is more than just an HVAC person. And that is an approximately sixteen hundred and eighty-six dollar increase for that, for that position. The second position is the one that, in name you may know, Rich Wiley. From mechanic to senior mechanic. We run lean and mean with the, with our mechanics. As our, as our fleet ages and as our schools age and our equipment ages. It is harder and harder to find. Parts and to source materials. Rich has taken upon himself to become the person who works. To source all of the materials for our fleet. He's also, you know, he's found things on eBay, finds, finds things that are no longer available. He has transformed the operation of the fleet to streamlining it, bringing in technology. You know, trying different things, developing a maintenance schedule so that we can track our. Our scheduled maintenance better. He, we've brought in a lot of new mechanics over the years. And we, our mechanics fix everything from a weed whacker to a dump truck. And so Rich has really taken it upon himself to mentor and to train the new mechanics. Being a mechanic has changed a lot over the years. It's very highly technical. It's highly computerized now. And Rich also is, Rich is also the welder. So he has really become a leader in his position. That position also has about a sixteen hundred dollar increase. So those are the two JACs that I really feel are worthwhile.
Just so that if we're looking at page five. Maintainer three to senior maintainer three, that would be HVAC slash. maintainer three to senior maintainer three, that would be HVAC slash CPO.
That would be maintainer three. Yes, that is the that that is the pool technician in HVAC position, yes.
And then the second one, mechanic to senior mechanic, is self-explanatory.
Correct.
Okay, and then going down to new positions?
We feel that we are always in need of additional staff, especially on the ground staff. As you all know, when we took over, when we acquired Keisha Farms, we maintain that property. I know that it's not being used right now, but we're still maintaining it. We maintain all of our open space. We're maintaining all of our fields in town, and I know that Kathy will be speaking to this, are being used. People want to use them more. We've spoken at length with the park board who and Little League who have more and more requests coming in for the way that our fields should be should be maintained as our fields are aging again. And I and I know that I sound redundant, but our fields are aging and they don't have a lot of irrigation and other things to help prolong their lives. The staff have to spend more time to try to be the caretakers of them. And so, you know, the schools are also being used more and more, and we take care of the the grounds and the maintenance of all the buildings. And so an extra, or not even an extra, but an additional person is definitely needed. There is a lot of it places in town that needs to be mowed, maintained. We also maintain the playgrounds. And again, additional staff member will make a dent in in that amount of work. Trying to, you know, consolidate for time. Sorry.
No. It's a lot. We haven't really dove and dived into the budget or the actual line items yet. There was you just go through.
And I also want to just just quickly say that maintaining our schools is also becoming more and more intensified. The schools, as you all know, as you toured them, you saw them. It takes a lot to maintain them and to try to make them look the best that they can.
For, I'm trying to look back. For Board of Ed electricity, for all the other ones, they're staying the same. And I may have missed it. I had to sneak out and grab dinner real quick. I apologize if it's been said already. Electricity for all the other buildings, for the town buildings are staying the same. But the schools are going up eighty thousand.
Yeah, we have not yet been able to do changes in the schools to LED lights and other things. That's one of the long-range plans or short-range plans that I'd like to do is work with Eversource or an energy company to be able to come in and work with changing our lights to LED lights. That's also going to take input from the Board of Ed and the teachers. As far as the actual rates, I see Mike is also on here and he could talk a little to utilities and how those numbers come about.
We in in finance was part of the budget development. We ask all the departments to sort of to to budget utilities, but we also look at them. We track month by month the actual bills and, you know, we used to try to, we thought we could could estimate, you know, what the what the rate increases would be and things like that. But it's really more an exercise of of because of because there's differences in usage, like Sally's describing with the more efficient lighting and things like that. We're really just comparing this year that we're in, month by month, to what we've budgeted in each account and each department and just making making changes, some increases, some decreases to kind of, and then, you know, a pretty modest provision for, you know, what we would expect a rate increase to be. But that's that's really what it has become. And we've we've been doing this for about three years now where we sort of, you know, after we asked the departments to take their cut at at utilities, we look at everything kind of on one piece of paper and try to track actual and and do that. So, you know, that's that's part of what you're seeing there too, is just just sort of testing our what we've budgeted in the current year, you know, against what we're actually seeing and and making adjustments adjustments for the next year's budget.
Yeah, because I'm looking back at nineteen twenty, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, one up like two ninety-five year or two ago, two years ago to three twenty, now up to four hundred. It's nearly doubled in four, three, four years. Would we, I mean, do you, Mike, anticipate hitting four hundred thousand for electric electricity at the schools? For?
Yes, Mayor.
What is this?
You're on gas.
I mean, the answer, the answer is yes. We've we've, like I said, for all the utilities, we've looked at every line in every department, compared it to what how we're running currently and adjusted accordingly. So that's the number we put there as a number we think is sufficient.
Yeah. Okay, I do apologize. It's always difficult to look because you got to go to the lower number.
Same answer, though, for all of them, Mayor, would be, you know, whether whether we're talking about gas or electric, we're we're doing the same thing. Water as well.
Anybody else with any questions for Sally?
Thank you for your time.
You watch how fast I can do town council. All right, Claudia, you're up. I'm gonna let Claudia and Charles go so that they can go back to bed. Thanks, Sally. So town managers on page eight, Claudia.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, counselors. I'm gonna start out on page five with my new position request, Human Resources Secretary One. You will see it is number one on the priority list. I realize my predecessor actually also requested another one point O in the HR department, but it was not funded. I've tried to give you as much detail in my memo as I can of March eighteenth. There are some analytics as far as what should the staffing look in the HR department for an employee base of two hundred? And basically, we'd be looking at two point eight. So I'm certainly would be happy with the two point O. So let me just give you a high level of what's happened over my first year with the town, that is. It's been quite quite a ride, quite significant. I have supported two police chiefs, two town managers. I'm not sure that happens very often. I've worked with others to migrate the employee health benefits from Anthem to Cigna, which took place effective July first. I successfully with our labor attorney negotiated six out of the seven union contracts and Physical Services now is now back at the negotiating table. There were four arbitration hearings. There was a mandate by the state of Connecticut that all employees had to complete two hours of sexual harassment training. That was successfully completed. I did conduct a harassment complaint investigation along with labor attorney as well and managed a twenty percent turnover rate in the town this year, which was a lot. It was significant. Typically, an average turnover rate should be below ten percent. So that's also a very expensive situation for the town. Turnovers is costly and also the loss of institutional knowledge is a hardship for the town. And lastly, I'm gonna throw in COVID because HR had to manage COVID. And that I had experienced doing that. It just took a lot of time. So I'm gonna move on unless anybody has any questions regarding the new position that I'm requesting.
Now, that new position, would that be Valerie from part-time to a full-time position?
Yes, it would. It's it's since it's not a unionized position, it is a confidential position. She is doing an excellent job and I do appreciate the extra funding the council has provided to extend her hours twice over the course of this year. It's it's been a huge help. She's she's doing a great job. Now, apparently, this new position is not in the budget, so it would have to be added to the budget.
Okay, any other, any questions for Claudia with the HR aspect of Town Manager's Office?
Okay, so let's move to page eight. I probably have the least number of line items of all departments, but they are special for me. The first one is tuition reimbursement. Five, one, two, one, four. Typically, in the past, it's been budgeted fourteen thousand. It's been reduced to eight thousand five hundred. Past past practice has been not practice, the past experience, let me say, has been it typically, it's been mostly police officers that are getting, taking classes for continuing education or graduate-level classes. So that has been reduced. Contractually, the town does only require is required to budget thirteen thousand five hundred. We have been budgeting a little high in the past. My next item is recruitment, five, two, two, one, five.
Oh, Claudia, are you asking that five, one, two, one, four, go from eight eighty-five hundred to thirteen five?
I'm looking on page eight, go from fourteen thousand to eight point five.
But are you looking at eight point five to go to thirteen five?
No, I'm looking at a reduction from fourteen to eight point five. I don't see thirteen.
No, but you said you'd said something about
Oh, that the contractual obligation for tuition reimbursement is totaled thirteen thousand five hundred for two or three contracts. I was just giving you that as kind of factual piece of information.
Okay.
I think that's why we've budgeted fourteen thousand in the past.
Okay.
But it's never, it's never spent.
Would we would be, would we be in violation of any of those contracts if we underfunded to eighty-five hundred?
I would have to check contract language more in depth to to answer that question for you. I'm not sure if the wording says it has to be available or it has to be budgeted.
We used to underfund it, Mike, before. And it's it's a roll of the dice like anything, you know. You, you know, you try to average out who tends to take advantage of it. But if it ends up that we guess wrong, then you're gonna have to fund it. We can't say no.
Okay. And maybe if Mike O'Neill's still on, we could get the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two actuals in that line.
Zero.
I I do have a request for four thousand dollars once classes are completed by police officers at the moment.
Okay.
But it's true, there has not been, you know, the employees have not been taking advantage of that of that benefit.
Okay. Anything, Claudia?
Let me move on to the next item, five, two, two, one, four, which is recruitment. This is an increase of eleven thousand dollars and it's the result of two significant changes that address addresses best practices and town policy. And that is the implementing implementation of pre-employment physicals and drug tests for part-time seasonal park and rec employees. In the past, they have not been background checked or they have not had a physical. They have not been drug tested. But it is not a good practice to continue. And it, we do have a drug-free workplace policy. So we should be ensuring our our employees start on board drug-free.
I have a question about that. So if we, you said it's a town policy. You mean that the the town policy is like the drug-free policy or that all employees need to get physicals and it was the other piece, the physicals, the drug testing, and what was the third thing?
The third thing is the background check.
Yeah, background.
Prior, prior to my coming on board, the police department performed the background checks. And they would take anywhere from two to three weeks. They were significantly holding up our hiring process. The prior town manager, I did some research, pulled in some proposals from other towns who are using different vendors. We decided on a sure hire and we get a turnaround background check anywhere from two to three days, a cost of anywhere from forty-five to sixty-five dollars per background check.
Okay, and so for the seasonal employees, this is like parks and rec. Like I'm picturing lifeguards and maybe the extra, um, I don't know if they do more landscaping and stuff like that. Is that's that's the sort of seasonal employment?
Correct. Physicals, we do have physical services, seasonal. Physical services in the past were given physical, had to get physicals and drug tests and background checks. And the termination was made that park and rec should also be doing the same. We should be, it's a good practice, not only from workers' compensation perspective, but these are staff, these are employees that are working with children.
Oh, yeah, I do think the background check is very important. It's just the physical seems like a little bit like much. And I don't know, like, if, do you use like a contractor who kind of takes care of all of it? Or is it like three different pieces?
We have MedWorks that takes care of our physicals and our drug tests. So that's we, the new employee will make an appointment with MedWorks and they go to MedWorks and they get both of those processes performed there and MedWorks sends the results directly to HR. And that's usually within twenty-four to forty-eight hours as well.
Okay. It seems like the physicals are, but I I mean, I I definitely think the background checks are important, obviously, because a lot of them are kids. But, um, and has the legalization of cannabis in Connecticut had a, has, you know, changed anything with regard to the drug-free policy? Or is, are you, are they testing drugs other than marijuana?
They're testing for all illegal drugs at MedWorks. Yes, has the legal legalization of marijuana affected drug testing outcomes? Yes, it has. We've had a handful of new employees that tested positive. When they are sat down at the new hiring onboarding session, they're given strict, rather, they're advised of, they're strongly advised of our drug-free workplace policy in that there is a no tolerance for use of And that there is a no tolerance for use of marijuana during during the day, during the workplace.
All right, thanks.
They're not to come to work smelling like marijuana. I mean, it it's comparable to alcohol. They're not to use alcohol during the workday, they're not to come to work smelling of alcohol. Um, it's it's new territory. I've been working with my HR colleagues about it to to create a new policy. Um, that's that's in the works.
Okay.
Mary, I just wanted to adjust the physical part of it, just think about a separate employee. From a worker's comp standpoint, come in and and they immediately put a claim in a day after working with us. And they were from the start, they are physically fit to work for us before putting a claim in.
Yeah, okay, I guess I'm picturing like, like eighteen-year-olds.
Yeah, but it does help.
Yeah. Okay.
That that's it, yes, uh, Council Biggs, you're absolutely correct. The physical is is the concern on the worker's comp injury side. We're protecting the town by by requiring them to have a physical.
Okay.
Um, if you're, I'll set no questions with recruitment, we can remove, move to support services. Uh, that's a reduction of a thousand dollars. I calculated it, it was uh over budgeted. And then finally, labor relations, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Number five, two, two.
Claudia, 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 I'm gonna take that one, that's not you.
Okay.
All right, that's Attorney Ken Plum. And you will see that I increased it. I know Tom and I had a discussion about this and I said, you're kidding yourselves. If you budgeted as low as you've been budgeting the town attorney and the labor attorney. You are absolutely kidding yourself with the amount of lawsuits we have or personnel matters coming up. So I put it up where I really think it should be, and that's at one hundred and twenty-five, and I know that's a huge, huge increase. But our bills are just, we got a lot of personnel issues and um. I just think you're kidding yourself if you lower it a lot.
Yeah, Bonnie, to your point, if they go to page nine, uh expended year-to-date is a hundred and eleven thousand.
I was just gonna say that. Yeah.
Historically, we didn't always have this situation, so.
Well, the last, I'd say, well. It's all my fault. It started when I got here. No, I'm kidding. Well, I'm not a dad. No, no, it's not true.
Eighteen to nineteen, it was thirty-seven, then it went to fifty-four.
Yeah. Yeah, you got a couple coming up.
Yeah, no.
We've been fortunate. Karma, our insurance liability coverage has been taking care of quite a. Well, a good chunk of the the legal fees, but not all of them.
All right, that's it, I think. Anybody else, Claudia? Thank you, Madame.
Thank you. See you tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Council.
Thanks. Thank you, Claudia.
Welcome.
All right, really, really, really quick, Charles. Um, as Steve said. The zoning enforcement officer by charter really reports to the manager, so I don't know how Steve ever got it in his budget. So I did move everything over. And Charles, if you could very, very quickly just highlight the items that are in the budget on page eight.
Good night, everyone. On page eight, I will start by. Looking at item number five, two, two, zero, seven. And that's um legal advertisement for the zoning Board of Appeals. We have two, six, nine, one. Uh, between July first, twenty twenty-one. And March thirtieth this year. We expended twenty-seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. For legal advertisement. No legal advertisement, this statutory requirement. Um, we can uh. Attempt to, well, first of all. We are looking at a budget of at least three thousand for the upcoming year. For the current year, I should say. We can, we can try to um. Keep it in that three thousand dollars and I'm. I'm pretty sure that we can, if we. Uh, reduce the wording, reduce the words that, because. Uh, the newspaper's charged by the wording. So if we can reduce that and um, I think we could reduce that to some extent. Also, I was told that the rate of advertising went up during this past year. Like most other things, so that's one thing. Um. Then a quick look at uh CEO training. Uh, we have. I think we moved from two hundred to five fifty. And I had said earlier that we could um. We could further reduce that to four forty, which is not much anyway, but we could do that possibly. Um, a quick look at uh. Uniforms, we have six hundred dollars. That could take a cut to three hundred or four hundred dollars. Um, so so that's pretty much what I have. Bonnie.
Anybody with any questions for Charles? Think you're locking out, Charles. It's late at night. Not much of a budget. You've actually talked about two places where we could cut, so. Good start.
Yes.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, good night.
Um, all right, so for the other items, I gave Michael a copy of Fred's contract. So Michael knows he's gonna have to adjust some of the items under the town manager with salaries and benefits and things like that. Um. I don't know, there's if there's, there's not really much in here. I know we're gonna have to uh. Raise up a little bit under travel and training because of the ICMA conference. Um, so we'll have to boost that a little bit. That's. I don't know, everything else, I think, has pretty much been talked about. And then on page six, last but no means least, town council. I left your salary alone, is that okay? So there isn't much here. There isn't much here at all. I mean, you know, you gotta do the audit, there's dues for CROG, CCM. Which we're involved with and printing, so I don't know, there's nothing really here either. Because of a fairly small budget. So I don't know if anybody has questions there. And then that does it.
Well, no, I had a question because I think we're also members of cost and I don't know. And this was something that shared up with Michael. I don't know if Mike, it's in finance. Or or.
Mike, usually it's here. Did you itemize that or no? Because usually we, I mean, it doesn't cost that much, but.
Not in finance.
All right, so I'll get you what that is. It's very minimal. And we'll put it in there, Mayor.
Okay.
Are are we, are we taking advantage of the CROG and the CCM?
I am.
Or I mean, you know, I I don't get involved with that, but are you, are we? Are we getting our money?
Mike and I do CCM. Um, I mean, they do a lot of training that they're not charging for us. Which I make sure I send to all the other department heads. Um, CROG, I've always been very involved municipal services.
Are the departments taking advantage of some of the training?
Some of them, yeah. Cost is doing a lot of um training now too. Um, and not charging. Um, CCM really is a lobbying. They're really lobbying on behalf of all the communities. But they have other things. CROG is more. They do a lot with us with regional planning. Don't come out of CROG because CROG was just designated by the state. As not just CROG, but all the COGS, all the capital, um, all the council of governments, I'm sorry. Have been designated by the state. To be the funnel of rank ordering all the federal grants. So you don't want to get out of CROG because we're.
Guessing we get out, I'm just, you know, it's forty thousand dollars, I just want to make sure we're using it, you know.
Yeah.
My, I I haven't, I've gone to like one training class, I think, you know.
Departments too.
Yeah, okay.
Mike goes to policy board, I go to municipal services, Derek goes to transportation committee. So we're very involved, that's for sure. And I've already sent things over to Fred about. CROG and how beneficial they are, so I'll get him involved.
Mike, where would Karma fall under?
That's in one ninety-two, insurance.
We'll do that Thursday.
All right, one ninety-three. Workers' comp is in every department, but the the lab policy and the deductibles are are in one ninety-three.
Okay.
We didn't follow the schedule, it's ten o'clock.
Yeah, but you didn't do bad for how bottom down you were. I figured we'd be here till eleven.
You all done?
Yeah, that's it for tonight.
Yes, thank you, Cheryl, for hanging in with us.
And and Sue.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes, Sue too.
And then who do we have? Who's the phone number?
You're welcome.
I don't know.
Two, eight, zero, fifty-seven, thirty-four.
They're not unmuting, so. They wish to remain anonymous.
Maybe they fell asleep.
I think they've been on all night too. Don't know what is. Do we need to motion to adjourn, Mayor?
Yep, you do.
I believe so.
So moved.
Second. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I love you all, but I'm glad I don't have to see you tomorrow. Goodbye.
I see you Thursday. Good night, everybody.
Bye.